We'd like to do a little quick round the table to see who's here. And can we do that online, too? Or...
We'll do that.
Okay, I'll let Ruth take over. And Ruth told me that if I need anything from her, I'm going to write it down. So if you see me writing something down, listen to her.
(laughing) Okay. Before we do introductions, I want to give you some ABCs of how we want to approach this hybrid meeting. First off, we record all of our HAB meetings. So this meeting is being recorded. There's also a transcript function in Microsoft Teams if you have need of seeing the words as they scroll, if you have any hearing issues. Ideally, everyone would be logged into Teams even if they're in the room. It helps you all stay engaged with each other and know who's online. It also helps us figure out who wants to speak and in what order, because there are multiple ways, only six, that typically you all tell me that you want to speak. We're trying to simplify that so I don't miss any of you. So if you're online, you can raise your hand or use the chat. If you are in the room and don't have a device, the old HAB habit, this is a 28-year-old habit, is you take your card, your name tag, and you stick it on its end. That's the visual clue. If you're in the meeting room, we're using these mics to speak and record. So if you have a laptop or tablet, turn the microphone off, or we're going to have too many microphones doing their thing, and they squeak. If you have difficulty for any reason during the meeting, don't call me. I'm not going to pick up texts, email, or phone calls during the meeting. Yes, people do that. I'm not going to pick them up. Lacey, will you raise your hand? Lacey's in the back. If you have any needs, Lacey's your go-to gal. She has computer tech people at her on speed dial to help you if you're having trouble with your computer or anything else. If you want to text or email with a problem, she also has those numbers to help you out. So you can text and email, it's just don't do it to me. Dave is our sound guy in the room. He's been with the HAB for a really long time. What else do people need to know about the microphones to survive today's meeting? All right. Questions about just the mechanics of the meeting?
What about if you're on the phone?
If you are on the phone, so let me double check. Okay, I've got three people on the phone showing. Dave, one of them is you. So who's on the phone so I can check in with you periodically? Because seeing your hand raised is a little tricky.
Kristy Baptiste with the Nespers Tribe.
Hi, Kristy. Who else is on the phone?
Hello.
Hi, this is Bob Walder, HAB member and from Umatilla County. And it doesn't look like the chat function was working. Maybe it is now, though. It does look like it is now, actually. Thank you.
All right. And Lacey's on... Lacey's monitoring chat as well. So if you need help, she will pick that up and get with you to solve whatever issue you have tripped over. All right. So let's go around the room physically of folks who can see each other, and then I'll go down the list of folks who are online. It's showing 43 people online. So there are more people here than you think. So Rob, would you like to start?
Rob Davis from the city of Pasco.
Dan Strom, Benton Franklin Public Health District, alternate.
So hug the mic when you're talking so people can hear you, so it picks up.
Good afternoon. Jeff Burright, Oregon Department of Energy. I'm alternate, and behind me, you can see Tom.
Right.
I'm Jan Cottrell. I represent the Washington State League of Women Voters, and I'm the vice chair of the River and Plateau Committee.
I'm Gene Van Lu, Richland Rod and Gun Club, Environmental Issues. Thank you.
Susan Coleman, Public at Large.
John Price, Washington State Department of Ecology.
Ryan Miller, Washington State Department of Ecology. And I see we also have Ginger Wireman sitting in the chairs back there as well. And she's with Ecology, too.
Carrie Meyer, U.S. Department of Energy.
Carrie Younger, USDOE.
Steve Wigman, Public at Large, current chairman of the board.
I'm Ruth Nicholson. I'm the HAB facilitator, and I've brought a crew of folks from the facilitation team. In the back, we have Jody Christensen, who's actually the president of RC Engineering, and she provides all of the administrative staff for the HAB, including Olivia Wilcox and Josh at the back, and Lacey up here. And online, it really is showing over 40 people. Let's just go down the list. I think that's going to be the easiest thing to do. We've got... Kristy, you're on the phone. Would you introduce yourself from Nespers?
Yes, Kristy Baptiste with the Nespers Tribe in Environmental Restoration Waste Management.
Thank you. Bob Walder? Would you reintroduce yourself?
Yeah, sorry about that earlier. Bob Walder, HAB member and Umatilla County.
Is there anyone else who's on the phone to introduce yourself? I think Shelley Simone is going to join us. I know she wanted to be here in person, but something came up. Ace Hoffman, would you like to introduce yourself?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, how nice. That's...I'm calling from Southern California and have been paying as much attention as I can to Hanford over the past few decades. Thank you.
All right. Roberto, would you like to introduce yourself, please? Roberto?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Hi. Oh, yeah, all right. Hi, everyone. My name's Robert Armijo. I am one of the media project managers from EPA or at the Hanford Project Office. Dave?
David Bowen.
Good afternoon, everyone. David Bowen here, Nuclear Waste Program Manager. Sorry I couldn't be there today, but really glad to see this happen.
Chris Sutton.
Chris Sutton, Public at Large. Hello, everyone.
Jen Colburn.
Hi, Jen Colburn, DOE.
Robert Crosby.
Good afternoon, Robert Crosby. I'm Nicole's chief engineer and chief of staff, DOE. Thank you.
Dan Solitz.
Good afternoon, Dan Solitz, Oregon Hanford Cleanup Board.
Deborah. You're signed in with a first name, so I can't use your last name. Oh, it's Deb Jürgen. Deb is with the DOE Contract Staff and isn't close to a mic at the moment. Dave Enin.
Good afternoon, folks. This is Dave Enin with EPA, the Hanford Project Manager. Sorry I couldn't be there today, but like David said, I'm glad this is happening and that we can work out some of these hybrid bugs. Thank you, thank you everybody for being here.
Esteban, I see you online. Would you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, hello, Public at Large, Esteban Ortiz, the HAB. Thank you.
Jolynn.
Hello, Jolynn Garcia with the Department of Energy Richland Operations Office.
And we have Dana Gribble Cowley, who's also with the DOE staff, contract staff. She's not near her mic at the moment either. Edward Holbrook.
Hello, Edward Holbrook, Department of Ecology.
Thank you. Jerry Palet. Jerry, are you with us?
Hi. This is Jerry.
There you are.
Part of American Northwest. I will be switching to...I see somehow Teams has me signed in on some other things. So I'll be switching out and then coming back. And I'm also going to be calling in from the airport in an hour and a half.
Right. Jeff Wyatt.
Yes, Jeff Wyatt, Oregon Hanford Cleanup Board.
Deborah Kelly.
Hi, Ruth. It's Debbie Kelly, and I'm with Hanford Mission Integration Solutions, contractor to DOE. Thank you.
All right. Teresa.
Hi, this is Teresa Plazuski. I'm from the U.S. Department of Energy Office of Environmental Management.
All right. Liz.
Good morning. Liz Matson with Hanford Challenge. Good to see everyone.
Marissa.
Hi, Marissa Merker, hydrogeologist with the Nespers Tribe.
Mason.
Yeah, Mason Murphy. I'm the Energy and Environmental Sciences Program Manager for the Confederate Tribe of Umatilla.
Mia.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Mia Burke, and I'm with Hanford Challenge.
Tyler Oats.
Hi, this is Tyler Oats. I'm with Bechtel National Incorporated at the Waste Treatment Plant Project.
Richard Bloom.
Hi, this is Rich Bloom. I'm with West Richland.
Tom Rogers.
Good afternoon, Tom Rogers, Washington State Department of Health.
Shannon.
Hey, everyone. Shannon Cram, University of Washington.
Steve Anderson.
Hi, everyone. Steve Anderson with Franklin and Grant County Representative.
All right. Wayne Barber.
Sorry about that. Hi, so Wayne Barber, reporter, weapons complex monitor, back east. Thanks.
Right. And Abby.
Abigail Zeiler, contractor to DOE.
Right. And David Replug, you snuck in after we did the introductions around the table.
Yeah, sorry I'm late. David Replug, alternate for TRIDEC.
All right. So we do have about 40 people dialed into this meeting. So there are more people here than you think. Two more technical notes. I can mute anybody, but only you can unmute yourself. I cannot unmute you. So if you're on the phone, how you get unmuted is star six. If you are on Teams, look for the little icon that looks like a microphone, and that toggles on and off. So you're in charge of unmuting yourself, although if the wicked witch of the West comes out in me, I can mute anybody. With that, Gary, would you like to introduce our headquarters person?
Well, certainly. Hopefully she is on. Okay, good. Guest speaker today from Department of Headquarters, Department of Energy Headquarters is Nicole Nelson-John. She's the Assistant Principal Deputy Assistant Secretary for Field Operations for the U.S. Department of Energy Office of Environmental Management. Nelson-John has the overriding responsibility to develop strategies, policy, and guidance for the 15 EM field sites in support of the EM mission. She oversees nuclear operations, safeguards, and security, and technological development. Nelson-John also oversees EM's efforts for the Justice 40 Initiative. Prior to this position, Nelson-John served as the manager of the National Nuclear Security Administration Savannah River Field Office, providing oversight for the management, quality assurance, nonproliferation, and national security missions for the Savannah River Site. Nelson-John was also the manager of the Livermore Field Office and the senior advisor to the acting NSA Administrator to the Los Alamos Field Site. In these roles, she managed a wide variety of tasks related to infrastructure, nuclear safety and security, nonproliferation, business, and contract management. Nelson-John served as energy attache to the U.S. Ambassador to the Mission to International Organizations in Vienna, Austria, where she coordinated and oversaw NSA support of the International Atomic Energy Agency Nuclear Security. She also served as the DOE attache to the U.S. Ambassador to Japan, overseeing NSA interests in Asia and the Pacific Rim. Other positions held in NSA include Office of the Director of Global Threat Reduction Initiative and Deputy Office Director in Material Protection, Control, and Accounting Program. Nelson-John began her career at Los Alamos National Laboratory, NEM. And she's also honored with the distinguished Presidential Rank Award and the Service to America Medal for the Partnership for Public Service. Nelson-John earned a bachelor's degree in political science from Grambling State University, a master's degree in liberal arts from St. John's College, and a master's degree in strategic security studies from National Defense University. She also completed the leadership for a democratic society program at the Federal Executive Institute. Without further ado, Nicole.
Thank you so much. It's exciting to log in today from Virginia. So I know everyone is in different places logging in, so in this new hybrid environment. So it's great to be with you today. Thank you very much. As was mentioned, I'm the Associate Principal Deputy Assistant Secretary for Field Ops and Environmental Management. Thank you for having me talk to you today on environmental justice, specifically what we're doing within the Office of Environmental Management. You know, what is environmental justice? It's the fair and meaningful involvement of all people, regardless of race, color, national origin, or income, with respect to the development, implementation, and enforcement of environmental laws, regulations, and policies. Since the Office of Environmental Management's inception, we incorporated the environmental justice efforts overall into our cleanup mission, into what we do. And I plan to focus today on really two areas related to environmental justice, our environmental justice efforts under the Justice 40 Initiative specifically. But also, I do want to take some time to talk about our Environmental Management Minority Serving Institution Partnership Program, otherwise known as ENSIP. And I do want to focus on that because it is under the umbrella of environmental justice with the Justice 40 Initiative. So first, environmental justice as a whole. It's a government effort to deliver at least 40% of the overall benefits of certain federal investments to disadvantaged communities. In July of 2021, we did receive as an agency implementation guidance for the Justice 40 Initiative. It was released under the executive order that governs Justice 40-14008. The guidance really supports the administration's comprehensive approach to advancing equity for all people in the United States. In accordance with the guidance, we have what are called covered programs. These are federal government programs that make covered investment benefits in one or more of seven total areas. So within our program, within the Office of Environmental Management, our covered programs deal with remediation and reduction of legacy pollution. So the focus of EM's environmental cleanup work under Justice 40 Initiative is the soil and groundwater remediation. EM Los Alamos, our field office there and our work in New Mexico, was chosen by the administration as one of five U.S. Department of Energy Justice 40 pilot programs. And it is the only Justice 40 pilot program in EM. All the other efforts were focused in another office within the Department of Energy. So we're really excited that EM was chosen to be a part of this pilot effort. There are actually 10 EM Justice 40 covered programs related to soil and groundwater remediation that have been approved by OMB. Hanford is one of those covered sites that we have. Now, as I mentioned, Los Alamos is a part of the pilot program, and we'll take our lessons learned from that program to incorporate it in other areas of EM. And also, MSIPP, the ENSIP program, is also included in that covered program. And I'll talk about that later. You can view all of our covered programs on our website link noted at the bottom of the slide. So if you just click that link, you can see all of our covered programs. Please go to the next slide, I'm sorry. Thank you. You can view all of our covered programs if you just click that link to the bottom of the slide. And if you don't have that, we can also put the link in the chat, so folks will be able to click that link. We've been interacting with stakeholders on the Justice 40 Initiative through presentations, conference calls, in-person, and virtual meetings and workshops. I believe it's important for us to apply the lessons learned from EMLA in our Justice 40 pilot program to our other DOE EM cleanup sites. To date, within Los Alamos, they've conducted listening sessions with stakeholders, and I've had the opportunity to personally speak to many of the stakeholders within New Mexico about this particular program and about what we're doing towards our overall cleanup effort. We were required, as a part of this program, to submit a Justice 40 stakeholder engagement plan to the Office of Management and Budget. And that stakeholder engagement plan was shared with others within EM and also approved for us to move forward with our overall stakeholder engagement. I also had my team look at a template that they could send to the other site offices within the EM complex to utilize as their engagement plan as well on Justice 40. We are ensuring that we have adequate resources for the existing, from the existing funding to successfully implement the Justice 40 Initiative. I will say there are other efforts that are going on outside of EM related to Justice 40. In February, the Council on Environmental Quality created a beta version of a climate and economic justice screening tool. The purpose of the tool is to help federal agencies identify disadvantaged communities near them that are marginalized, underserved, and overburdened by pollution. This screening tool is one that we will utilize to determine our 40% for our overall programs within EM and our overall efforts. This screening tool is going through a public feedback session, so you can actually go online and give feedback for the screening tool directly to the Council on Environmental Quality through May 25th. So you do have an opportunity to look at the screening tool, understand what elements the screening tool is looking at as well. We are now waiting on OMB to issue further guidance to agencies for the Justice 40 Initiative, including the path forward on the CEQ, Justice Screening Tool, and the overall scorecard that the government is utilizing for this specific effort. Next slide, please. Thank you, TK, for putting the screening tool website up. So now I just want to quickly talk about our ENSIP effort because, again, this is a part of our covered program. And it really addresses the need for building and maintaining a well-trained, technically skilled workforce within our EM complex. This is accomplished through our development of the next-generation critical science, engineering, and technology in math disciplines, along with cybersecurity and additive manufacturing. In fiscal year 2022, EM received $56 million for our ENSIP program. This was a significant uplift for our program. Traditionally, over the past several years, we've received between $5 and $6 million for our overall program in ENSIP. So essentially, we received $50 million more than what we have traditionally and historically gotten for this program. Through this, I've been able to visit minority-serving institutions, historically black colleges, historically Hispanic universities, near EM cleanup sites to socialize the opportunities of the ENSIP program. And on May 2nd, just here recently, I conducted a virtual meeting with Mr. Justin Gilery, President of the Northwest Indian College in Washington, to discuss the opportunities within the ENSIP programs. I would like to give you just a short overview of some of the programs that we have. We have competitive research awards, which are contracts with EM on mission-related research. The award recipients are partnered with Department of Energy National Laboratories across the country. We also have traditional internships, which are 10-week summer programs hosted by the Department of Energy National Laboratory, Savannah River Site, and EM Headquarters. We have environmental science field station activities, which are really hands-on summer activities for students to go through a summer program where we offer credits back to their university for research projects affiliated with the Savannah River Ecology Laboratory in South Carolina. Next slide, please. We also have our Technology Curriculum and Professional Development Program, where we will work with universities on grants and contracts that will be awarded related to instrumentation and specialized equipment, and we'll have workshops and site visits to provide professional faculty with development and training. We have our shared internship, excuse me, our Shared Interest Research Partnership Program, where we give grants for targeted research in areas that we are interested in within EM cleanup programs and sites. We also have created a postdoctoral fellows program and a graduate fellowship program. Again, both of these new with this additional funding that we've been able to receive. I hope that you are able to see how EM's efforts under the Justice 40 Initiative and the ENSIP support environmental justice at our cleanup sites and also... the ENSIP support environmental justice at our cleanup sites and also support for our future workforce. Uh, a couple of things that I would like to hear from you is how, how do you think we can better engage stakeholders through our advisory boards? Because one of the things that we've been doing through our Northern New Mexico Citizens' Advisory Boards and others is, for example, we utilize and, and ask those advisory boards, what are they hearing from disadvantaged communities? How can we better reach out? How can we, uh, better support and talk to and hear from those disadvantaged, disadvantaged communities in those areas to support us? For example, the Nevada Citizens Advisory Board uses radio advertisements, including Hispanic radio stations, to reach their communities. Um, our Northern New Mexico Citizens Advisory Boards provides materials and puts materials in Spanish, and we support that activity as well, and also gaining feedback on our overall Justice 40 activities. So anything that this particular board is doing that can support our stakeholder, us hearing from our stakeholders, that would be fantastic. Thank you for the opportunity to present today.
So what I propose is that we check in with both Ecology and EPA and then open it up to questions. Um, what is your timing, Nicole? I know you, you've got more than one commitment today.
Um, I have, I tried to get my four o'clock changed to four thirty, and it has not changed yet, so, um, right now I have until four.
Okay, so let me take back what I just said. So let's, if you've got questions for Nicole. Okay. Ryan, if you don't mind waiting for just a minute, let's open the, for questions to Nicole before we lose her. What questions? Jan?
Good morning. Thank you so much for your, um, for your presentation. It's ambitious, an ambitious undertaking. So Nicole, could, I have heard and read in a couple of different places about socializing this Justice 40 program. Could you talk about what that means?
Sure. So what we have done, particularly in our effort in New Mexico, is we've reached out to several stakeholder, stakeholders, and those we consider thought partners in this effort as well. For example, NMED has asked, uh, to be our thought partner in this Justice 40 Initiative, and really discussing what types of efforts that we are doing within Justice 40 and environmental justice overall. Talking about our programs, talking about what sites and programs are included in the Justice 40 Initiative, talking about the tool that's being developed to identify how we will calculate our forty percent, and more than anything, receiving feedback from stakeholders and those disadvantaged communities to understand what, what is it that they need? What is it that they want from us as a part of our understanding of their understanding of our EM mission and what we are doing as far as our remedies are concerned and how we're doing our overall work?
Thank you for that clarification.
All right, I have Dan Esteban and Chris in queue. Which Dan was in queue? Okay. Dan Solitz, was that you?
Uh, no, but thanks for asking.
Oh. Okay. Um, let's go to Esteban and Chris, and then I'm going to check in with the other folks on the phone, um, to see if they have questions as well. Esteban?
Yes, uh, thank you for that presentation, and the big thing, I think, you know, since my appointment to the HAB and, uh, as a public and large member, one of the big things, I think, especially for the colleges, I think, like you mentioned, and informing the young students and people here in the young community in the area. What would be the best way, and like, I know you said like Spanish and to, I know Washington is rich with the native communities too, but also other communities, to inform them, what, what are the resources to what's going on at the Hanford and the best way to access that information and to educate the, you know, the usually the diverse communities, especially here in the Tri-Cities, which di- diversity is extremely growing, as you can see by the census statistics, you know? What's the best ways and options to kind of put that information out to the public and have them, especially the young members at WSC Tri-Cities, Columbia Basin College and others ones around here, and Yakima, even the Yakima area and others up there, right?
Yes, one of the efforts that we are making, particularly with the expansion of our ENSIP program, is expanding our outreach exponentially. Before, we only received between a five to six million dollars each year for that program. And so therefore, we were, our reach was only so broad for, uh, our overall effort. With expansion of our funding, we now can utilize our laboratory, Savannah River National Laboratory, to continue and expand their outreach to historically Hispanic universities, HBCUs, historically black colleges and universities, and TCU's, tribal colleges and universities in English and Spanish, and we really want to meet those universities where they are. So we've expanded our reach.
Chris Sutton?
Yes, Nicole, um, how does the Justice 40 Initiative relate to DOE's Third Environmental Justice Strategic Plan and the subsequent, uh, five-year implementation plan of that third environmental strategy?
I apologize, I had something stuck in my throat. Could you, could you repeat the question? I talked through your entire question. I apologize.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Oh yes, I can hear you.
Okay. In 2017, DOE released its Third Environmental Justice Strategic Plan, and in 2019, it released its five-year implementation plan, uh, for environmental justice of that, uh, third strategic plan. And I was wondering how the Justice 40 Initiative related to those two, to those other two initiatives?
Thank you. Um, so in, in 2017, and, and I'm not familiar with that particular plan, but I know that the Justice 40 Initiative, the difference, I believe, um, between this particular effort and other environmental justice efforts, is that we are looking specifically at a percentage of our overall benefit going to specific communities. I, I am not aware where there has been a calculation of that nature that has been done before in previous administrations, where the benefit calculation is done in a particular way, where you're looking at surrounding communities and saying that your overall benefit is going to, a percentage of your overall benefit is going to those communities. I came to EM, or came back to EM after thirty years, about a year and a half ago. So this effort and the Justice 40 effort, it came almost about when I came to EM. So I've been focused on this particular Justice 40 Initiative, particularly the calculation that has, that we've been asked to do for our overall cleanup effort, uh, with soil and groundwater cleanup.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I want to check in with Kristi and Bob on the phone. Um, do either of you have a question for Nicole?
No.
Right.
I guess, um, thank you for your, um, presentation.
I thought there was a question in the chat? Or was there a question?
Right, I have Shannon in queue. I just wanted to make sure that, that our phone folks didn't get overlooked. Shannon Cram?
Yeah, thanks so much. Yeah, I do. I just want to say thanks so much, Nicole, for your, um, presentation. I'm really excited about this, and, um, I actually teach at UW-Bethel, which is one of the three campuses at UW. It's a minority and, uh, serving institution, so is the UW-Tacoma campus. Um, and I, when I'm looking on the list for the internship opportunities, I don't see either of those campuses on the list. So I was just curious about, um, if you could, if it's easy to explain what the process is to kind of develop that relationship with perhaps UW-Bethel and UW-Tacoma to make these kind of opportunities available for our students. Thank you.
Absolutely. So the two primary areas on how we've had in the past, how we've worked with schools, are through our co- cooperative research awards, which are contracts, and they go out through, uh, traditional contractual RSI. So most of the relationships we've developed with our schools have been through that process since twenty, since 2016. And then our internship opportunities have been advertised on the Savannah River National Laboratory website, and we can definitely get information to the overall, everyone on the phone on how to, uh, connect with, uh, those internship opportunities as well. Now that we have additional funding, we are broadening our reach to even more schools for internship opportunities, grant opportunities, and that's non-competitive and competitive grant opportunities, and opportunities within our graduate and post-op program, which didn't exist before. So we are definitely broadening our reach in those areas to reach schools that we may have not been able to put into the program previously. But we can definitely get you that information and get the, get everyone that information that's on the call.
Wonderful, thanks so much, I appreciate you.
Nicole, we have a question in the room of, um, are you willing to share your email, or should we channel any questions to, through our local DOE people?
Um, I can put my email in the chat right now. And, uh...
And for those that don't have access to chat, feel free to, to channel questions through Gary Younger, our, uh, HAB Federal Coordinator, um, if you can't, if you can't reach Nicole directly.
But definitely feel free to reach out to our local DOE team as well.
All right.
Absolutely.
We've only got Nicole for about five more minutes, so are there other questions, comments that you wish to share with her before, um, before we lose her? Anyone?
Nicole, this is Steve Wigman, Chairman. Um, we all want to thank you very much for your discussion of this important topic. And we're going to be looking at what we can do as a board to help communicate the goals and get connections made for people who are not connected right now. Apparently, reaching out to the public isn't as much of a charter in our history as it should be, so we're going to be taking a look at that. So thank you very much for the energy that you're putting into this important topic, and we're all grateful for that.
And we have one final question. Jeff, you get the last word.
Oh, wonderful. Uh, thank you. I, I had a question about the concept of benefit, and I was curious how you define it, um, particularly in the, the screening that you were talking about. You know, when I think of benefit, are you referring to the people who benefit from a cleaned-up site? In other, in other words, we're talking about people in the future? Are we talking about benefits to the people who are conducting the work today in terms of livelihoods and, and that sort of thing? Are we talking about surrounding community and who may benefit or be negatively affected by the activities going on? What are the different dimensions of benefit that you are using as you try to develop metrics on where to focus?
Now, that's an excellent question, and that, and that frankly, is something we've been discussing ever since the initiative came out, because there are lots of elements to what the definition of benefit is. Even calculating what you're doing that develops that benefit. What, you know, what type of cleanup work? What types of jobs are developed? What types of training programs? And that's why the screening tool that is currently being evaluated has this open public comment period, because right now, it is, it's very, um, it, it's frankly, very inclusive of many different areas that you can consider a benefit. So we are trying to, during this pilot effort, trying to really hone down on what can we actually identify as a benefit of the work that you are doing in these seven, again, there's not just one area, there's seven different areas, uh, for the Justice 40 activities. So that currently is still an open question and tying down, what does that benefit mean overall? So that is a question we are still looking at. And, and I say, when I say we, I mean, that's something that the White House and OMB and others are defining. We're really, we're sort of waiting. I mean, we're not determining it, meaning EM, uh, we're waiting for that definitive, uh, definition to come out.
Thank you. And, I'm sorry, the comment period, when does that close again?
Uh, May 25th, I believe.
Okay. Thank you.
May 25th, yes. It was extended, it was supposed to be closed already, but it extended because folks requested more time to, to look at the platform.
All right. Nicole, do you have time for one more question? I know we're right up against, um, your other commitments.
Sure.
Okay, Jerry, this really is the last question.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It may, may be a complex one, but, um, it boils down to, uh, my organization, along with many others, uh, and tribes, um, and the board, um, commented about budget priorities and very explicitly how, um, the, well, environmental justice, EJ40, says that your, your priority is soil and groundwater cleanup, and presumably that would include the Columbia River Corridor, which has the greatest, most immediate environmental justice impacts, for example, on the three sovereign nations who have rights to live along, fish, use the resources of the river corridor. The budget slashed river corridor cleanup dramatically, and I'm at a loss to try to understand and was hoping that you'd explain how the EJ40, Justice 40 Initiative, was used in the budget process and if you're going to be revising budget proposals based on Justice 40. And I suppose we should have begun this, and, um, really, I do want to say, I'm very hurt that we didn't begin a meeting on environmental justice with a land acknowledgement for the three nations whose resources guaranteed under the U.S. Constitution and Treaties of 1855 we are discussing today.
Thank you, thank you for the question. Um, there hasn't been, since, since we're in the pilot phase of the Justice 40 Initiative specifically, and the efforts of what forty percent of our overall, uh, efforts in soil and groundwater efforts are doing at Hanford, for example, um, our Hanford cleanup work and those activities, that connection, um, specifically, I don't think has been made for specific areas. Um, so I, I really, I cannot speak to that. Um, now, environmental justice has been an area that we've worked on in a long, for a long time, as I mentioned when I opened up within EM and our environmental cleanup process. It's part of NEPA process, it's a part of several of our processes within EM. But the initiative that we have right now for Justice 40 specifically is really focused on the forty percent of our effort going towards, uh, disadvantaged communities as a whole. There probably, there is likely a larger discussion on environmental justice and where that fits within the budget, but that isn't something that I've been involved in personally.
Nicole, thank you for spending... Nicole, thank you for spending so much time with our group today. It's the first time they have been able to actually be in the same room together in more than two years. So we appreciate your time and sharing your information with us.
Thank you. It was a pleasure. I look forward to getting out to Hanford again very soon.
So we're going to check in with both Ecology and EPA for their comments and observations about environmental justice, then take a break, and then open the conversation up more broadly. That's the plan. So Ryan and John. Let's see if we get this to work. Ah, it worked.
Wonderful. Thanks, Ruth. Sorry, trying to get a good mic set up here. Okay.
Hug those mics.
Got it. Okay, here we go. So hello, my name's Ryan Miller. I'm the Communications Section Manager for Ecology's Nuclear Waste Program. I'm here with John Price, the Tri-Party Agreement Section Manager. And we're just going to be talking about Washington State's environmental justice law and kind of, you know, how it relates and applies to the Hanford site. So next slide, Ruth. Perfect. So just a very quick overview, we're going to just do a little bit of an introduction about what the environmental justice law is, you know, what the act, you know, exactly what the act is, what environmental justice is, or at least the state's definition of environmental justice. We're going to go over the Heal Act components. We're going to go over environmental justice at Hanford, and then we'll go ahead and answer any questions you guys have. So next slide, Ruth. Perfect. So the Healthy Environment for All, which the acronym is Heal Act, so I'll call it the Heal Act from now on, but again, Heal Act is Healthy Environment for All. That act was passed in March 2021 by the state, and this law is a historic step toward eliminating environmental and health disparities in communities of color and low-income populations. The State Departments of Agriculture, Commerce, Ecology, Health, Natural Resources, Transportation, and the Puget Sound Partnerships are all covered by this law, and other agencies have the option to opt into the Heal Act. Ecology also is part of the passage of the Heal Act. Ecology created an Office of Equity and Environmental Justice that will provide leadership on environmental justice, Heal implementation, Title VI compliance, equity analysis, and diversity and inclusion. With that, Ruth, you can go ahead and go to the next slide. So what is the Heal Act? So this law implements recommendations from the Environmental Justice Task Force, which if anybody wants to message me afterwards, I'm happy to provide that. The intent of the law is to remedy the effects of policies and practices that led to environmental health disparities in communities and improve the health of all people in Washington. It's also meant to prevent and address environmental health disparities in the administration of ongoing and new environmental programs, including allocation of funds. It's also meant to reduce exposure to environmental hazards within Indian country and to track and measure the accomplishments of state agency environmental justice implementation. Next one, Ruth. All right. So to preface, I know this is a pretty, two pretty big, long paragraphs, but they're very, very important. So this is the definition of environmental justice, and I'm going to go ahead and read that definition for everybody. And this definition, it's similar to EPA's, but Washington State has some additions to it. So environmental justice means the fair treatment and meaningful involvement of all people, regardless of race, color, national origin, or income, with respect to the development, implementation, and enforcement of environmental laws, rules, and policies. Environmental justice includes addressing disproportionate environmental health impacts in all laws, rules, and policies with environmental impacts by prioritizing vulnerable populations and overburdened communities, the equitable distribution of resources and benefits, and eliminating harm. And with that, Ruth, you can go to the next slide. All right. So what does the Heal Act entail? It creates an environmental justice council and inter-agency work group. So the council provides a forum for the public and communities to provide testimony on their environmental justice concerns. And the groups bring together environmental justice advocates and practitioners to co-develop environmental justice guidance with agency representatives, recommend ways, sorry, recommend ways to identify overburdened communities and to create measures to track agency progress on implementation of environmental justice goals. So as part of the Heal Act, agencies are required to create or strengthen environmental justice implementation plan, a community engagement plan, and a tribal consultation framework. So each process and plan will be developed through a community engagement process and consultation with tribes and in alignment with guidance from the council mentioned above. As you can see on the slide, there's a timeline that goes over some of the deadlines for different parts of the law. And again, this presentation will be available after the meeting, so you can pull that up if you want to look at that more closely. Ruth, you can go ahead and go to the next slide. So the Heal Act directs covered agencies to conduct environmental justice assessments when making decisions to inform and support agency considerations of overburdened communities and vulnerable populations. Assessments are intended to assist the agency with equitable distribution of environmental benefits, reducing environmental harms, and addressing environmental and health disparities. So as part of that, the strategic plan requirements, as you can see, include goals, actions, measures to track and measure accomplishments, methods to provide equitable access and ensure nondiscrimination, strategies to ensure compliance with existing federal and state laws related to environmental justice, and the actions requiring environmental justice assessments will be, you know, actions that are undergoing significant legislative rule development, adopting or developing new grant or loan programs, designing or awarding capital projects, grants or loans of $12 million or more, designing or awarding transportation projects, grants or loans of $15 million or more, and developing agency request legislation. Next slide, Ruth. One sec here. So the Washington Health Disparities Map is part of the Heal Act. So the Heal Act directs agencies to use accumulative environmental health impact analysis, which that can be done through Washington Department of Health's Washington Health Disparities Map. And that may, so that kind of covers, so the map compares environmental health disparities across the state and includes data such as diesel emissions, ozone pollution, hazardous waste sites, poverty, and cardiovascular disease. So other agencies covered by the Heal Act are also required to provide data on air, water, soil, polluted sites, toxic waste, pesticides, toxic chemicals, and other applicable information. Agencies can also use the map to guide and support community engagement to better understand the needs of people impacted by agency actions. And Ruth, with that, you can go to the next slide. So all that being said, we're going to talk about environmental justice at Hanford. So as many of you know, Hanford's plutonium production contaminated the area around the Hanford site for 40 years before cleanup began in 1989. Each additional year of cleanup means improperly stored waste or accidental releases could further contaminate the soil, air aquifers, sorry, air, aquifers, and Columbia River, impacting communities in the surrounding area and downriver. Cleanup delays mean prolonged threats to habitat and wildlife and risks to the physical, cultural, and economic well-being of local tribes and communities. Next slide, Ruth. So there are three tribal governments in the area that the state partners with on environmental issues attributed to nuclear waste. These indigenous populations have reserved rights per their 1855 Treaty of Yakima and the Treaty of Walla Walla. These are the Confederate Tribes and Bands of the Yakima Nation, Confederate Tribes of the Yum-Tilla Indian Reservation, and the Nez Perce Tribe. The Wannapum Tribe is one of the bands of the Yakima Nation. They once inhabited year-round villages where Hanford is now before being forced off their ancestral territory. The Wannapum have not received any compensation for their loss of lands and treaty territory, and all of these indigenous populations have expressed significant interest in the oversight and thorough cleanup of polluted areas that once provided hunting, gathering, and cultural resources for multiple sovereign tribes and nations. And I'll take a quick pause here just to highlight what's on the screen for everybody. You'll see on the right, that is a screenshot of a map that shows the communities of color that surround the Hanford site. And then on the bottom left, you'll see just a table that kind of breaks down some different demographics for Adams, Benton, Franklin, Grant Counties, as well as the cities of Kennewick, Madawa, Pasco, and Richland. And on the very bottom, you can see the average state percentages and demographics across the board, so you can compare, you know, counties to cities, cities to states, that sort of thing. But, so continuing on with my next bullet point, so the legacy of environmental contamination from Hanford and ongoing environmental and public health risks have regional impacts on economic and community well-being. These impacts disproportionately impact people already overburdened by environmental and health concerns and who are underserved or face barriers to accessing government services, benefits, and protections. The populations around the Hanford site includes people who may be more vulnerable to impacts, may not have access to information about potential health risks related to the site, or may not have the resources to protect themselves and their families, especially in an emergency. For example, one of the closest cities to Hanford is Madawa in Grant County. Madawa has about 4,600 people. Of that, 98% identify as Hispanic, 61% are low-income, 76% have less than a high school education, and 52% do not speak English well. Governments have an obligation to ensure information about public health, laws, safety, and decisions that may affect the public are provided in appropriate language and accessible formats. And with that, we'll go to the next slide, and I believe we'll kick it over to John.
Thanks, Ryan. So Ryan introduced me already, but again, I'm John Price. I'm the Tri-Party Agreement Section Manager for the Department of Ecology. So I'm going to talk about the specifics of moving EJ forward at Hanford. EPA recently issued guidance for comment, some EJ guidance, oh, thank you. So between the EPA guidance, the DOE EJ 40 Initiative, and Washington's Heals Act, the tri-parties have three parallel efforts moving forward on EJ. The tri-party managers, so the Director of Ecology, the EPA Regional Administrator, and the DOE Site Manager meet a few times per year. They most recently met in April, and environmental justice was on their agenda. And so the three parties talked about collaborating as we move forward on these parallel efforts. So for implementation, the tri-party staff, that's people like me, and public involvement officers, that's people like Ryan, are collaborating to coordinate our respective initiatives. We're also continuing our independent efforts on education and outreach, which has always had an EJ component. Next slide, please. So even though Washington's Heal Act just came out, Ecology has been concerned with environmental justice since 1995. And I know personally, for at least the last five to 10 years, whenever I briefed the Director of Ecology, there have been environmental justice questions on our briefing. So we've been very much focused on it for a long time. Some practical things that we can do is, for example, make sure that notices about translation being available are at the top of webpages or printed material rather than at the bottom. So in other words, don't make people read the fine print. That makes information more accessible. Secondly, recognize that there's a digital divide. During the last couple of years of the COVID restrictions, it's not been possible for people to get in and look at the paper administrative record for Hanford. We're fortunate that we have a very good electronic or digital administrative record, but we also have to recognize there's a digital divide. There may be people that don't have access to computers that can't access those wonderful information sources on the administrative record. So we're working as a tri-parties to make information more accessible, for example, by putting up notices in public libraries about how to access the Hanford administrative record. And then another example is ensure that perimeter signage around the Hanford site is available in a couple of languages. And so you can see examples in the photograph, we've been doing that for a number of years. Next slide, please. So for Ecology, our responsibility, as Ryan mentioned, is to ensure that the rights of sovereign nations are upheld through cleanup. And a fundamental concept for Ecology is the longer cleanup takes, the longer exercise of those rights are delayed. So we want to make sure the cleanup proceeds on schedule or as close to schedule as possible, or even try and speed up the cleanup. That's really the best thing we can do for environmental justice, is try and keep the cleanup going and speed it up. And that's it. I think we're ready for questions or the next topic.
Actually, we'll check in with EPA and then open up for questions before break. Roberto has brought a number of EJ resources to the HAB over the last few months. So I think, I was going to ask him to weigh in and share his perspectives, but EPA doesn't have a formal presentation, because they've already done a couple of them. Roberto?
Actually, I'm going to go ahead and just really quick, a couple of quick things. And like Ruth said, you've already, you've seen our presentation, so I think it's better to reserve that time for questions and discussion. But just a couple of things to leave y'all with. One, again, we look to the tribes in terms of, we have a treaty responsibility to the tribes that is different than EJ. And so we look to the tribes to kind of give us our cue. If there's an issue, it's up to them to decide if they would rather that be addressed as a treaty issue or an EJ issue. Either, you know, they're both possibilities, but it's up to them to decide. We defer. And then, and then like John mentioned, we are looking for opportunities, our upper Director of Ecology, Brian Vance, my acting RA, all, they said, yeah, let's look for opportunities to engage together and collaborate on EJ. So, and I was very, very happy with, you know, glad to hear Nicole's presentation, and I hope she's able to engage, because I think there's a lot of, a lot of good, good energy there. So that's all I really wanted to cover. Thank you.
Roberto, let's get you off mute so we can hear you.
Okay, how about now?
Much better.
Yeah, I got a new headset, so I'm still figuring out the mic button. Yeah, thanks, Dave. And in addition to that, I've also copied the YouTube link that holds EPA's presentation to the PEC Committee on Environmental Justice that was held back in fall of 2021.
What questions do you have for the agencies on EJ? Anyone? Oh, then you get to ask.
All right, my turn. I really appreciate the recognition that the most important thing we can do for environmental justice is get the cleanup done as quickly and as effectively as we can, so that future land use is really a just conclusion for all of us. And I appreciate the comments that were made by the agencies on the things that they're emphasizing. And I think that the discussions that we want to have on the long-term aspects of cleanup and Hanford are related to this conversation directly, and I look forward to that continuation. That was my question.
You want to ask your question again, so they hear it?
They didn't hear it.
I'm, I, I, we'll, we'll try again.
It was, it was less of a question than a comment and appreciation for the things that people are thinking about, because the cleanup of the site is environmental justice for all of us. And the future land use of the site is needing to be framed in the context of what values are going to be important, and the tribal rights and the rights of others to access to the land appropriately. I think we've known for a long time that Hanford will be contaminated at some level, pretty much forever, and we need to be cognizant of that as we think about the ultimate completion of the project and the concepts of as low as reasonably achievable in the framing of the decisions that are made. There's always going to be controversy, and that's to be expected. That's why the HAB has to be a positive part of the future of the site. And we're going to be talking a lot about that in the next couple of days, of how we can be a positive part- can be a positive part of the future of the site. And the context that the agencies have presented, I think, is a good framework for some of those conversations. So the question is, HABites, do you want to play? And I think the answer is, gotta be yes. So let's start attending meetings. A lot of money was invested in this meeting, and I don't see a lot of faces in the room. So I would encourage people that when you have the opportunity to attend these meetings, even though you're a little disappointed in the agenda, to please do so. And I think the next couple of meetings we have are going to be important in relation to that.
End of question. Jeff Burright.
Thanks. I think my question is for you, maybe, John, but it might also be for Ryan or others in the PIO section. You talked about the three agencies talking about their respective efforts as they relate to environmental justice. Is there a crosswalk of where there are similarities and differences, where people are going to go their own road, and they might meet up again later? It'd be really interesting to see that crosswalk in integration strategy down the road. And maybe that's somewhere where the PIC or some version of the HAB could find some ability to see the bigger picture of how this all fits. So that's kind of a question suggestion as part one. Part two is, what is your vision for how you see this conversation moving with the Hanford Advisory Board going forward?
Yeah, so, you know, there are some differences. So you heard DOE mention that they have a scorecard for their Justice Forty Initiative. The HEALS Act also requires Washington to have metrics for environmental justice implementation. I'm pretty sure our metrics are going to be different. I mean, you asked a question, Jeff, about how do you measure benefits? And I didn't hear, you know, a concise answer about that. So I'm sure there are some differences, and we don't have a crosswalk yet. So we're just, I think we're taking baby steps right now and looking at things that we are all doing and trying to coordinate those rather than all doing them separately. And then I'll see if Ryan wants to add anything to that.
Yeah, I don't think I'll add much to the first part, what John said. But Jeff, just reiterating the second part of your question, that was how the HAB is tying into the environmental justice topic essentially? Okay, well, I think, you know, this is a very important topic for, one, the Ecology, and I don't want to speak for EPA, but I know it's important for EPA too, from my understanding. And obviously DOE is undertaking their EJ effort as well. So this is going to be a topic that's going to be around for the foreseeable future, you know, till the end of cleanup and beyond. So if there's any sort of, and this has obviously been a topic that I know the PIC and HAB committees have been requesting, you know, frequently. And, you know, the last time, last year, I think it was October or September was when EPA and Ecology presented the PIC on environmental justice. And at the time, Energy wasn't ready to present on it, but now they are. So I think all three agencies are ripe for discussion. We're very eager to, you know, present and talk to you guys about it. And if you have any advice, any suggestions, you know, any more conversations you want to have around this, I know that from Ecology's standpoint, we're very happy to engage with you guys on whatever topic, you know, EJ-related that you want to, and whatever you guys see fit as a board to move forward with.
All right. Let me check in with the folks on the phone. Those who are only logged in by phone, do you have a question for the TPA agencies? All right. I have Rob Esteban and Jan. Rob?
Hi. Boy, I think this is a really great thing that we're doing. And I think that the whole aspect of environmental justice is bringing it out into the open and making it totally transparent. And, you know, I really enjoy this. I know I'll be talking with some other people about this and how positive it's looking. However, I got to give a couple of things to note. One's the, or, the, you say you don't want us to look at the fine print? Would you try to read the scale on page five? And I just think that maybe our projector folks could maybe increase the size when it comes to displaying words on the screen. The last couple of presentations, it was pretty small, and you couldn't read the bars on the chart up there. So, but I think more importantly, it comes down to the other thing that, and Steve, you kind of got right into it in your very first saying, is that, you know, it all comes down to end states. And we all want this project to be complete and cleaned up. And I think our first idea of this meeting was to have an end states meeting and to start talking about that and visualizing what we all see as what's it going to look like when we're gone? You know, when I leave the board and I have to have comfort in the belief that the site's going to get cleaned up to some level, and yet we still don't have that end state. And so I really think we need to consider looking at end states from this standpoint. The other aspect is, is that we all recognize that a lot of this injustice wouldn't be necessary if we were cleaned up. So let's get the cleanup done. And the only thing holding us back is money. We all recognize that. Every budget meeting we have, every project we have, what is the reason why we can't get the plant cleaned, the place cleaned up? It's money. We don't want this to be a public works project to last forever. I mean, let's get it cleaned up. We know what to do. The technology's there. They've known how to immobilize that waste, so it doesn't get out and it doesn't hurt the people. We know it. Technology's there. So let's, don't let this measure, dilute our head effort to get the cleanup done here. And I really get back to the point is, is let's get it done. And we really need to concentrate on cleanup. Thank you.
All right, I've got four people in queue. It's a mix of chat and hands and cards on the table, and I hope this is the right order. Esteban, then Jan, Liz, and Chris. Esteban?
Yes, thank you, Ruth, and thanks, Ryan, for kind of mentioning, because the other day, I think I took a trip. There was an event with the Hispanic community in Moses Lake, and then kind of stopped in Otello, which it's heavily populated by farmworkers. And the big thing that, and also, you know, talking to people here in the community in Richland, the big thing that people, especially in, you know, in the community, say that, number one, like you said, the language barrier, right? People don't even know what's going on with Hanford, the cleanup process. And I think there's been some several articles at me, because I'm on the Hanford Advisor Board, that it's talked to about the classification process and the concerns with that, right? And the big thing also with, you know, people that know about it, they think that, you know, especially folks that, you know, the Hispanic communities, they think when they mention Hanford, it's a high school issue. You know, it's Hanford, Kennewick, and all that stuff. So that's the big thing, I think. And the big thing, you know, if we want to get stuff done, and yeah, continue with the work, but the big thing in the involvement in the community process is that, right? What are you actually communicating to the community about the process and the cleanup phase happening? Because at the end, you know, you know, they're the ones that are getting affected, the community, by this work that's happening, what's actually getting done. And especially, I think, you know, like, I think when we stopped in Otello, when I stopped in Otello, I think right now, you got all these H2A workers coming, you know, that mostly, and I think the other day even with the help of, you know, so the Governor Sinse's office, the Guatemalan consulate was coming. They couldn't even find a place here in the area, because the Guatemalan population community is growing. And second, you know, and second, most of these people from the Guatemalan community are indigenous, and they speak their indigenous languages. So I don't even know if that's even on all of U.S.'s radar regarding reaching out to the Guatemalan, you know, community.
Thank you, Esteban. Jan and Chris, you're on deck. Jan?
So I'm just trying to put together some things having to do with what Nicole talked about. You know, she said there's been a big plus-up from like five or six million dollars to fifty-six million dollars. So for the Department of Energy, my question is, do you know anything about how this money is being distributed? She talked about Savannah River particularly, like her associations must be with the National Laboratory there. Like, is there money settled here on either PNNL or any kind of project or area in particular? And before, I just wanted to talk as well to, I guess, Ecology, wondering if you guys have also received a plus-up in your budget for these matters? I know you've been addressing them for a long time, but is there new funding that's going to make it possible for you to do things that you had only dreamed of before? So, yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Carrie?
Hey, Jan. So I think you probably at the AMSSAB also heard a little bit about the fifty-six million dollars. Kristin Ellis briefed us on that as part of her agency priorities and discussion on the environmental justice and the infrastructure law. So the fifty-six million dollars is out there. It's not really been allotted yet, is my understanding. I've heard different things, but really what they're trying to do is figure out how it would be allotted and where it would go. They're not that far into it yet. I can tell you that there's no money allotted right now to Hanford. I have no idea if there will be or not. My gut says, and this is a little bit of speculation, so just bear with me for a second, but it's likely going to go into STEM initiatives and underserved communities. That's, I've heard some rumblings, but again, it's all still in discussions. So as soon as we know something more, I'd be happy to share, though.
Well, that's good news. If there's money going to go to STEM, that means it's grant money, and the colleges and universities, and probably even the public schools, could be beneficiaries of that.
Sorry, I hit the button. Yeah, it'll just depend on what the criteria are. Again, it could go to tribal specific, it could go to charter, I just don't know, anything beyond what I shared. So I've already speculated enough, so I'll turn it over to Ecology.
Ryan?
Yeah, I might defer to John first on the funding part of the question, but then I could touch more on the communication side of it.
Yeah, funding-wise, at the statewide level, there is more money going into environmental justice. As was mentioned on the slides, there is an office within Ecology now, and they have staff, so they're doing more across the state. And that's not specific to Hanford. But, you know, also, as I mentioned, we've been looking at environmental justice within Ecology since nineteen ninety-five, and there's been a big emphasis at Hanford, you know, behind the scenes, you know, for probably the last ten years. Now, I don't know that I can really say there's more funding devoted, but it's been a part of our work for a long time.
Yeah, thanks, John. And on the, and the communication's kind of part of the question, I also want to refer back to Esteban's comments, because I think David Enen from EPA made a really good comment in the chat I want to share with folks that may not have seen it. He said that Esteban is right, we need to do a better job of engaging and communicating, because I'm concerned that we aren't asking our questions and the right voices to hear these other voices. And, I mean, that's just true with environmental justice. We have to do a better job of reaching, you know, these communities that historically have been, you know, overburdened, impacted, that we aren't reaching, you know, whether it's in other languages or other means. And from, you know, the Nuclear Waste Program communications point, that's a huge push we're making as the HEALS Act is being implemented across the agency, is, sorry, and, so it's just going to be a huge effort going forward, that we're going to be putting a lot more effort and concentration on, you know, this more dedicated outreach, you know, to achieve our environmental justice goals. And I see Ginger has the mic, if you want to add anything, Ginger?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, gosh, the language thing that Esteban brought up, I went to Warden High School, which is, where is it, near Moses Lake, east of Moses Lake, some years ago, and there were eleven languages from Latin America spoken in the high school. And they were all indigenous, mostly indigenous, and not Mexican Spanish. And I've also been supporting the Moses Lake High Line, Yakima Valley, Wenatchee Valley, a lot of the community colleges and their Mesa or just programs that are serving underserved, traditionally underserved, a lot of DACA kids, first-generation students. And, and that, what Esteban said, if you didn't understand what he was saying, is when you get out into these communities, and even at Pasco and Chihuahua High School, I have said, have you heard of Hanford? And kids think I am talking about Hanford High School, their competitor. They do not know that the Hanford site exists.
All right. We've got a couple more questions before break. Lacey's been helping me with the queue to try to make it less confusing. Liz, and then Chris. Liz?
Thanks, Ruth. I, I guess I would be interested in hearing about the last-minute switch. There's, it seemed to be a very last-minute switch in the agenda to not talk about committee of the whole and instead choose the EJ topic. And I didn't see much in the way of communication about why that call was made. I mean, a few people have talked about how important talking about end states is when we talk about environmental justice. I also feel like in the work that we're doing right now as Hanford Challenge, we're looking at accessible topics to begin conversations with people who are new to Hanford that are relatable and accessible. And imagining what the site looks like when it's done is a more accessible topic. So the end states conversation feels really important. And it's just really frustrating that after two years of asking for it, we still haven't had it. So I'm wondering if someone can talk about when we're going to have that conversation, if there's a commitment to it, which seemed like there was? Because it feels like not having that conversation is kind of like a, it's very mixed messaging that environmental justice is important, and we're not talking about end states. So can someone talk about that, or maybe multiple people? Thanks.
Carrie?
Hi, Liz. So as Gary had indicated in his email back, it was pretty short and sweet, but it was completely accurate. There literally was nobody available to provide the briefing. And while we are looking at an opportunity, hopefully in the fall, and I've shared with you guys on multiple occasions, right now, and I think most of you are aware, the Hanford site has a workforce that is, I'll just say, we have a lot of people eligible for retirement. And while we're in the process of hiring, I want to share with you, we have one person currently managing and doing the work for land use, site stewardship, tribal affairs, and, oh, and site realty. Because of retirements, people taking other jobs, and a medical issue that has had one of their people on medical leave for eight months. So, you know, we have to balance the people that we have and the work that they're doing with their availability. And I could have asked that person to drop the other work that they were doing, but to be frank, I think we're going to have a better discussion if we wait into the fall. We are working on some things in regards to land use, future land use. We want to have a full and comprehensive briefing. We don't want to, we don't want to just check the box. And I want to have the right people available. There's, that's really what it comes down to. And I'm sorry that it was last minute. We were scrambling, trying to find ways to make it happen, and we just couldn't. I really do appreciate you guys, I know most of you are, you know, understanding, there's no nefarious intent here. It's truly just where we're at. And the work that is being done right now is really important, as you guys know, because you want to hear about it. So just bear with us. We are seeing some improvements in our hiring, and, you know, I'm benefiting from that. I think for the first time in four years, my department is only down two people, which is still quite a lot when you only have ten feds. But, you know, just please bear with us. We do hope that we can have We do hope that we can have a discussion on this in the fall. I do think, though, that in addition, we want to have some prep discussions with you all and have a discussion, a dialogue about the questions you had, because those were really far-reaching and broad. Ask us to speculate on what the site is going to look like in 100 years when someone drives through it, that's, that's kind of far-reaching out there right now. But to ask us, you know, where we're at with the comprehensive land use plan and the inner area principles, what do you, you know, as you get the river corridor cleaned up, which, let's face it, that's getting close. What are you going to do with that? How are you managing it? Where do you have rods in place? Those things, I think, are relevant and we can have good discussions on. I'm not the expert on it, but I would like us to have a discussion so that we can frame the committee of the whole in the fall to be constructive. Does that answer your question, Liz?
A little bit. I think, I guess, I think a big part of the frustration, Carrie, is that, I mean, maybe it's just me, like I sent, I don't know, four emails, maybe five, asking for a meeting with issue managers on, let's have an agenda plan and conversation, can we please talk? And there was no response to do that. So, if there's cumulative stress that is making it so no one can show up, I just feel like there's work that needs to be done on the communication front, so we're not just sitting in the dark wondering what's happening.
Hey, Liz, can you hold on?
Yeah.
Just a second. You were cutting out, so we got to the point of you had requested issue manager meetings, but then it was like every other word.
Oh, sorry.
So, can you go back to that?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, I, I was talking about this communication breakdown about what the plan was, what's happening, and I, I hear the frustration of staffing being talked about, I mean, it's been on, an issue for a long time now. Maybe there can be more of an effort to get meetings together to at least go over what those challenges are, so we're not finding out, I mean, like, the week before that we have a different topic. I think you, I mean, I think the frustration is understandable on our end as well, because we have been asking for those meetings and that collaboration to talk about, how can we frame this? And we used to do that for committees of the whole. We'd work to come up with the agenda together, and how can we structure conversations that can be open-ended to get creative conversation and talking about imagined futures that are really accessible and engaging, which is really what, why I think it ties into this. It's a really engaging conversation when you start talking about imagining the future, and it brings everyone in instead of the more technical topics that are harder to understand and require a certain baseline of information to start engaging. So, I'm glad that it's still on the agenda for the fall, and that there is interest in working together to come up with that agenda. Thanks.
Thanks, Liz. And just as a follow-on, so, we did have a meeting with a couple of our subject matter experts, people that are kind of, they do some aspects of it, and at least a couple of the board members to discuss that early on. I'm not sure if you were part of that. And it was based on that discussion, when we walked away, we were like, "No, we've got to have this person here, and we don't have her." So, I, I do apologize, you're right, it was, it was last minute, and we could have communicated a little bit better on that. I'm going to own that myself, because to be honest, I got focused on other things, but we will do better on that.
Right. John, did you need to add anything before?
Yeah, so, I hope DOE would involve EPA and Ecology in putting those briefings together. I know of at least four prior efforts on future land use, and I think we should start by going over what those prior efforts were. There's a few people around that remember the history still, I think Susan Lechban does, Jerry Paletta does, Dave Enen's been with EPA since 1992, Dave, and so, a few of us remember that history, and it would be good to pull that all together and hand it off before it's forgotten. So, I would offer that, and I'd like to do that collaboratively.
Thanks, John. So, this isn't really the topic for today. We had talked quite a bit with, with your team, they were very helpful, I'm sure we'll do that again, but if we can kind of shift back to environmental justice, that would be great.
All right. Chris Sutton, thank you so much for your patience and for waiting. What's on your mind?
Yeah, this is a comment more toward DOE than toward Ecology and EPA. But if DOE is, is going to be serious about implementing environmental justice, especially in terms of engaging and reaching out much more effectively to the various communities surrounding Hanford, it's going to require money. And at least in the latest lifecycle report, the PBS that contains funding for these kind of efforts is planned to receive absolutely minimal increases in funding over the next 50 years. So, it seems to me there's a real gap in what we're hearing in terms of plans to implement environmental justice and possibly the reality of getting funding to do that. And so, I think DOE has to be much more aggressive in trying to get funding at the local level and reaching out toward local communities and engaging more in local communities. Because right now, if there's any validity in that lifecycle plan, I just don't see that the funding's going to be there over, over the foreseeable future to have much of an impact in this regard. And that's my comment.
Thank you, Chris. This is Carrie again. So, I, I don't disagree with you. There are a lot of, a lot of aspects to this. We're going to have to look at what we're doing now, what works right, what works well, what doesn't work, how we can use technology to expand, but we also want to work with the board to see what economies we can find there. Many of you represent specific communities, and you guys know how your communities best take information in or what they need to understand it. I'm hopeful that as we, you know, keep recovering from the pandemic, that we're going to be able to expand on those efforts. It may require shifting some of our funding around to accommodate some of that, or, in fact, maybe there are some things that we're doing that aren't providing the bang for the buck that we should reconsider. And that's really, you know, rather than just go after more funding, we want to look at the whole program, see what works, what doesn't. And again, I cannot stress enough, we really want the board's input, but we want to understand what we can do to help you communicate this information to your communities. You know, what do you need? And I'm, I'm expecting that we'll hear more about public meetings, and I think that's, that's obviously a key component, but I think there are other things as well beyond just having public meetings. Not everybody likes going to public meetings. I hear, I hear somebody chuckling, and I'm going to be honest, public meetings are not my favorite thing to do, but we'll do them when we need to. But are, are there other things? For a number of years, and maybe they still do, I don't know, but Hanford communities used to do newsletters. And I cannot tell you how often, and it always surprised me, somebody I knew would say, "Oh, my gosh, did you hear about this?" I'm like, "Yeah, I wrote it." But, you know, those things matter. And, you know, maybe there are economies of scale we can find there. In regards to languages, absolutely. I heard everything Esteban said. I, I will share, I don't remember where I was at, I was at the Richland Public Library yesterday, and I went into an area and closed the door, and there was a sign, all in Spanish. And my first thought was, "I wish they had that in an English translation." And then my next thought was, "Oh, that sucks." I mean, really, how many other, how many people do we all know who think the same thing? How come they didn't write it in my language? So, what can we do to make sure we're reaching those people? The Hispanic and Spanish community, I heard the Guatemalan, one we haven't talked about is the Russian community in this area. It is growing by leaps and bounds. So, you know, everyone here who represents a community, you have those people in your community. What can we do to reach them better? What can we do to help you help us reach them? But, Chris, your, your question was, was really a comment on if you're serious about it, you got to go after the funding, and you're right, I'm not sure it's just going to be limited to going after so much as re-racking what we have and focusing on what works, utilizing new technologies and other, other products that may be out there.
Well, it's not just a matter of economizing either, and I mentioned this earlier in my question to Nicole, is DOE in 2019, they published their latest five-year implementation plan for environmental justice, and they give a number of goals and objectives for each site. There are eight goals for the Hanford site, and when you look at those eight goals in that five-year plan, that's going to take money, and you can't get that, you can't achieve those goals merely by economizing or having the Hanford Advisory Board do more. It just flat-out takes more money.
Thanks, Chris. I, I hear what you're saying. Sorry. And I guess I need to go back and look at those myself, because it's, it's not quite sinking in, but I'll do that, and, and we'll have another discussion on it.
Pam, last question before break.
Um, in asking what we can do to reach out, we've not been able to talk in person for two years, and we have had very successful information sharing meetings in this room in the past, in the evening, and, and it's not just minority populations, it's the Hanford workforce that are really curious about what's going on and what the priorities are. And I remember a particular workshop that was focused on the waste treatment plant, and the people that have been working on that plant haven't been able to go there for two years. So, I think that if you do a series of public meetings and invite people to come and have interpreters, that it would be excellent, and beginning the conversation again that we've had in the past. Thank you.
Thanks, Pam. I, I believe the, the WTP meeting you were talking about, we did two of them, right? And it was an open house, we had all the displays up, the regulators were there, they had their displays and tables, we had interactive stations in the back, that's the one you're talking about? Yeah, the first one, we had, I think, close to 400 people attend, and the second one was just a little bit over that. So, and we had people coming from the west side, from Oregon, they were very, very successful. You're right, many people at WTP aren't able to go out there right now. I'm going to say that's not going to change. As, as the site ramps up into tank waste treatment operations, that's where the focus is going to be on, and that's where workers' focus is going to be on, that's why we have the virtual tour. But opportunities to bring, to bring those visuals and that information to, I'll say, a common area like a workshop are definitely things we should, should start thinking about. Whether that'll be immediately or a little bit further out will depend on where we're at with the pandemic, but definitely on the table. I actually, I think that we had some great exchange of information there, so it was good. Thanks.
All right. I'm going to propose that we take a break. When you look around the room, there are empty chairs, there are 40 people logged in on Teams right now. So, this meeting is actually bigger than you can see. So, why don't we come back at 2:15 and have an open conversation about EJ? All right. So, when, when the agenda evolved more into EJ, the suggestion was that, we hear from the TPA agencies in the first section, sort of a status of where they are and what's going on, and then have a more open conversation about the topic after the break. So, that's where we are. Do you have anything to add? Putting you on the spot, I didn't warn you.
Yeah, just call me Spot.
[laughing]
So, obviously, there's a lot of things that enter the mind as we talk about EJ, and it's a term that I've been familiar with for at least 20 years, and the application here is a little bit different than what I saw in prior life forms, but it's still very relevant to the way we think. And I think what we'd like to do now is, if you have comments or thoughts or questions about environmental justice specifically, that's a, a good topic for this afternoon, because we haven't had the agenda evolved for the, the total discussion we want to have on end states in the future. I'd like not to wander off too far from specifically EJ this afternoon. So, with that, are there things that we need to bring up related to EJ? Jan? And thank you, Jan, for attending the AMSAB for us.
Thank you for sending me.
Oh, yeah, it was my pleasure.
Yeah, I had a great time, and it was a wonderful kind of eyewitness to what goes on, on the, you know, the next level of advisory, citizens advisory boards. I was just delighted to be, to be there, so. And so, that's my comment for this afternoon, is that I brought one of the slide shows that they gave us for the... So, they're both talking about the same thing, they both cite the, the executive order and so on, but this one is just slightly different in emphasis. So, I think it might kind of spur us in our discussions about environmental justice to see that different people within the Department of Energy have different priorities or emphasis themselves in what they want to accomplish under this new rubric, and it's not even new. So, anyway, I, I would like to offer you, I don't have anything to say in particular except the fact that it has a little bit more about tribal engagement, I think, than the, the one from Nicole. And the action plan, which I think everyone is waiting for more specific, but I just want to offer you to have a look at this in comparison with what Nicole had as an opportunity to kind of compare and contrast, and if it helps you to understand some aspect of it better.
Can we do it on the screen? Let me search, I think I might have it in my email.
Yeah, I think that's really a good idea, we're going to see if we can put it on the screen.
So, for those who are here that, you know, maybe have never been to Paducah, did you know that they have the National Museum did you know that they have the National Museum of Quilts? And when they say National Museum, does that mean that it's part of the Smithsonian? I think it might be because you know that Mitch McConnell is from Kentucky and he's been serving in the Congress for a good long time. And so they have people that have very, a lot of influence in making things happen. So I was happy to see that only two blocks from my hotel. So I'm only saying that as in passing.
Do we want to go to Susan while we're waiting for electronic land here?
Right, so yes. I'm trying to find the presentation for Jan and I didn't do my due diligence. So Susan and Rob.
Okay, thank you. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Susan Lechbande. I'm the alternate for the League of Women Voters. And kindly, we've been allowed to sit at the table. And when it comes to environmental justice intersecting with Hanford Advisory or Hanford Cleanup, it is unclear, certainly to me and I suspect many others, where the board itself will be able to provide any kind of advice. The Hanford Advisory Board, per se, does not have a budget for its own public outreach. We don't have that budget. That's not something that we have ever done. But many of the organizations, including the League of Women Voters and some of the other organizations, have done a lot of public outreach on their own. I'm sure they have grants and stuff. I really, I don't know how all that part works. But they're certainly willing to do that. And part of the responsibility of board members is to take back information from each and every meeting to your organization. And they distribute it and figure out how they can become involved when there are opportunities for public engagement. So just, I'm looking for that so that board members understand where the intersection is for the board and what level of detail they need to have in order to look at board values and figure out how best to provide any recommendations or anything like that. It's something that board members are certainly willing to do. We just need to understand what it is specifically, where it intersects with cleanup decisions. Because we're chartered to provide advice. And not all advice has to be absolutely formal. In our meetings, we will exchange information to provide that. But we expect to learn first and then provide advice that is informed, not emotionally based, but advice that's informed on whatever the technical parts are of the decisions. And then that verbals up into a policy level. So you have to kind of look at the weeds a little bit. Sometimes we get too far in the weeds and we know that and we kind of sell police. That being said, you have to understand part of the weeds, know where you came from in order to figure out where you need to go. So we look forward to that. I suspect all the board members do. Where's that intersect? Where do we best provide that? Because we don't have our own funding as a board in order to do that. Thank you.
All right, I have Dan Solitz and Rob Davis. Dan?
Thank you. I guess thinking process-wise, it would probably be a good idea to form an IM team now. And those that are going on that IM team, I would really recommend that you take the virtual meetings for the White House Environmental Justice Advisory Committee. Listen to those. And also, the EPA has a National Environmental Justice Committee. Listen to those. Try to figure out how things fit in. And I would like to ask Chris if he can share those two documents he talked about, that the DOE has already developed on environmental justice, something like an action plan, EPOD action plan or something like that. If we could get a hold of that, that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, Dan, this is Chris. I would upload them to Teams, but I couldn't find the COTW channel on Teams to put things in. So maybe if Josh could add that to Teams that I could upload these documents to it.
All right, Josh heard you.
Thank you, that would be great.
All right, Rob?
Yeah. I think that we could probably right now do some thinking about this. But it kind of hit me that in like, somebody uses an example, walking into the library and finding a sign in Spanish and saying, "Why is this in English?" Well, those are big, wide-open things for me to say, "Okay, there are other things I miss." Okay? And so maybe we should identify a number of items right now, are examples of injustice that we could act upon. Okay? And I can think of one here just recently. Ginger and I had a little talk. And a level of injustice is, look at all the pollution we're putting out, driving 9,000 cars down to the site and back. Possibly, our recommendation, and just an example, is bring the buses back. Or bring a private carrier to bring the buses back. Or subsidize tickets, like we used to do in INL and even here, what we did for the buses. So those are intersections we may be able to participate in in the environmental justice activity. I think that we should just start writing things down where we, where different people see different injustices that the rest of us just don't see yet. Just thought process. You know, that might be a working meeting or possibly an IM group or whatever. But I don't think we should delay on it. And I think traffic problems are one thing that we should put on the board as that activity. I think that there are other educational profiles or other things that we can support as a board to do our fair share in the environmental justice goals of the DOE and our state and ecology. What do you think of that?
Okay, so I've got two people in queue and I've got Jan's briefing and then come back to Rob? Okay. Jeff and then Richard? And I found the presentation, Jan, electronically. Yes.
It's a lot of me. All right. So we're talking about how do we structure, where do we take the environmental justice conversations? Is the open topic here, right? I guess I wanted to take the opportunity then to talk about some of the conversations that we've been having in the PIC over the last year-plus. This is a conversation that we started the ball rolling on. We weren't entirely sure where we needed to take it. We weren't sure who needs to lead it. We aren't sure of where the outcome is in terms of, as Susan has mentioned, where is the intersection with the board? And with the specific charge to have advice about cleanup and topics surrounding it. But I did want to run down the list of some of the things that we have talked about and see if there is energy there as the groups come together. So we've talked about ways to keep Hanford alive in the future and in multiple communities. One suggestion that keeps coming back is how do we engage the arts? Not only STEM, but how do we engage the arts as a way to bring the topics surrounding Hanford and the awareness of Hanford to more people? That there may be different methods to do that, ways to communicate to different populations and ways of thinking approaching the Hanford site. We've talked about how environmental justice relates to the metrics used in risk determinations and what are the environmental justice elements of risk at the site? That that might be a conversation that we could have. Similar to what Susan had mentioned as well, we could take a look at our own HAB values. There is a document, it's on our HAB website, it's fairly short, describing the board values that we can use as something to always fall back on. And maybe we ought to take a fresh look at those values with an environmental justice lens and then flip it around as well, look at environmental justice through the board values lens and see if there are any, anything we can learn there or anything that we would change about our own values that backs up the things that the board then produces. From today's conversation, talking about how the different agencies are approaching environmental justice somewhat differently, but also potentially having some parallel tracks, I think that the board, in an advisory capacity, could stand to learn more about those integrated efforts and provide perspectives that might help you as you figure out how to further integrate those and then extend them out. I don't think that it's within the board's scope to be another outreach arm of the tri-party agencies. But in an advisory capacity, we might be able to shake some of those. We've talked about the intersection with tribal treaties. And that also relates to end states and to the EJ lens of risk metrics, that there are some conversations there and just some learning that we could all do about the intersection of the tribal treaty rights and how those play into the ultimate cleanup decisions at the site. We've talked about environmental justice of cleanup benefits. And this relates to the question that I asked earlier today about, are we talking about the benefits to future users of the site? Or are we talking about the people who are benefiting today from the opportunities that the funding at the site and the cleanup and the ability to advance a career, to support a family, all those things? And are there equity lenses to apply to that question as well? And does the board have any sense there? Something that has been brought up as well, are there specific populations, communities nearby that deserve special attention? I know Madawah has been brought up in our meetings as well as today. There may be others. Is there a need to talk at the board level with the agencies about what your strategy is to reach out to those communities? And are there ways that we can help, you know, provide those, just those little tweaks that help make that more effective? We've talked about intergenerational equity as well. That's one that Dan Solitz has energy behind. I hope that he can speak up and talk some more about that as well. But are we being equitable to those who are coming after us in both the benefits and the costs of the cleanup? And we've also talked about, are there ways this board can learn from environmental justice efforts that have occurred at other circular cleanups? Is there a cross-pollination opportunity there to have some conversations? I know the Duamish River was one that Jerry has brought up a couple of different times. Can we learn from what others have done? Could the agencies here learn from the experience of your counterparts at other agencies or at other cleanups who've had to already follow this path? So as I said, we talk around a lot of stuff. There's a lot of popcorn. I think that the struggle that we are having now is how to structure all of these ideas into something that can carry the conversation forward, potentially jog something loose with the agencies, potentially make a product. I don't know if the product is the point. But there you go. Thank you for the time.
You've obviously thought about this a lot. And I personally appreciate kind of the holistic way you just described it. And I think we should consider integrating some of those thoughts into a update of our values and maybe even another sense of logic. But I'd also like to interject risk in the sense of, what is the risk of this place? And what is it headed toward? So that future generations and current impacted groups actually know what the risk of this place is. And we've talked about it for years. I personally believe the risk is a lot less than it used to be, but it's never going to go away. So there's some sense of risk communication that could be integrated into some of your thinking. But I'd like to have us pursue the full suite of things that you just described. And it doesn't have to result in advice, but it could certainly affect the way we discuss things and think about things in the future. So don't lose that thought. Not that you would if I asked you to.
I've got Richard and then Jan. Richard, you're online.
Yeah, I'll jump in there. I don't know if I'm being full-screen like before.
Oh, yeah, you're large and in charge, Richard.
Okay. Well, you know, if you want to talk about environmental justice or justice in general, you have to look at the other side of the coin, the injustice. You know, there's injustice that's historical, injustice that's current, you know, such as the emissions associated with going out to the site, the workforce, the taxes that are being collected to fund this project. Those all could be considered injustices. And then, you know, the overall long-term risk, there's a long-term injustice there. Before you talk about addressing justice, I think the HAB could come back with knowledge of the site and the history and some of the risks, work on outlining the injustices that should be addressed and those that can or can't. You know, we talk a lot about engaging Madawah. But the fact is, Madawah is doing quite well as far as what its future would have been with or without Hanford. Now, they may have some future risk or current risk that they are either unaware of and maybe they should be informed or, you know, we need to mitigate that risk. But the fact of the matter is, when you want to, not that I'm opposed to doing additional STEM education, but I'm not quite sure I see that as a, you know, there's probably more STEM education because Hanford exists rather than not existing if you, if you threw the educational opportunities that have developed in the tri-cities. But I think if we as a HAB could, you know, could contribute to this, we should look at focusing on what the injustices are. You know, obviously, the tribes have talked about fisheries, access for fishing and that type of aspects. That's both a historical and a current injustice, if you wish. Maybe. I'm not quite sure what this area would have looked like if Hanford never existed. We know there were farms out there. We know that there were settlements. Now, what transpired may not have been, in some people's minds, justice. But it would have evolved. So these are kind of the conversations I think is appropriate for the HAB to take, independent of actions for DOE, but just defining what the injustices are for Hanford. And I have been working for almost over 12 years to get buses out to Hanford. And hopefully, in the near future, I'll have some good news.
Jan, you're next.
So I asked if you wanted to compare and contrast this other slideshow. And so, of course, that's what I've been doing, is looking at it. On page four, if you're on it, it says, "Hire the Clean Energy Corps." Is that like AmeriCorps? Do we have Clean Energy Corps in the state of Washington or in eastern Washington? What is it, what would it take to have the Clean Energy Corps a part of our planning process? So that was, and it also mentions that $62 million. So Carrie was absolutely right, that I had already heard the number before. And when you're at a national meeting, $62 million... And when you're at a national meeting, $62 million doesn't sound like quite as much as it does right here in the tri-cities, you know? I guess that's part of it. And also having to do with Rob's comment, having to do with buses and now Richard Bloom's kind of teaser is that there is, one of the objectives is to climate action and sustainability, which is on page two. And then on page six, no, talking about reducing the amount of, you know, carbon impact and environmental, I mean, apparently it's one of the objectives that the money could be spent on and maybe there could be a grant for the buses because certainly everybody driving out there for a half an hour with no other kinds of public support. And then of course, more discussion about the STEM in terms of not only the Clean Energy Corps, which is part of what is on page six, is mentioned as succession planning. So if you hire people and then train them up, I think that you're going to have a good employee. And expanding outreach to tribal colleges and universities, once again, once again, the STEM program could be well, well-used in that regard. And with the STEM program, which oftentimes sounds like it's like directed to females so that they can learn science and math, but I think that it, for ethnic communities, the STEM training is also important.
So do you want to go through this or? So there are copies, hard copies of this for those that are in the meeting room and electronically this is lifted out of the binder that went to the, the folks who went to the EMS SAB meeting. That's, that's the, the source of this electronic version. Questions for Jan? I think there are copies here or maybe even at your place, place setting. Aha. Questions for Jan about what she heard in Paducah? I've got three people in queue. Dan Solitz, Dan Strom and Shannon. Dan Solitz.
Thank you and thanks Jeff for inviting an expansion on that, intergenerational equity or intergenerational justice. It's a, it's a complicated conversation and, and there's actually some groundwork been somewhat laid in the responses to the partner of energies, request for information on away from reactor storage or consolidated storage. There's a, a lot of very thoughtful, there's 1,600 pages. You don't have to read it all. Some of them are kind of dupgative, but the states particularly weighed in and some of the organization, nuclear proportion organizations weighed in on, on this question of intergenerational justice and also interregional justice. There was interesting discussion by the state of Pennsylvania on who should pay for the cleanup. The DOE said that the state should pay for the cleanup because that was commercial waste and the state said, no, the DOE should help pay for the cleanup at this reprocessing site because Hanford, the end reactor waste was sent there. So the interregional discussion is also, I think, worth having and, and kind of complicated. And in the intergenerational discussion, I think involves geopolitics at large and the value of, of the deterrence and how long that value of deterrence will last, who got the benefit and who's going to have to pay the price for, for having this, this deterrent if it's perceived as something of value. And just, what does, what does the present generation, what do the present generations owe the future generations as far as, as, as the Hanford site? So I think it's a discussion worth, worth having. Thank you.
Dan Strom.
Can you hear me? Working?
Yeah, get, just hug it, hug it a little closer.
Okay. I heard, I've heard the word risk and I don't have this document with me, but we worked back in the 1990s on a DOE RL funded project called Integrated Risk Assessment Project for Hanford. And in that, we looked at all kinds of aspects of, of, of risk. And I think you have to understand this in order to understand environmental justice. So first of all, for most people, risk doesn't mean human health risk. It means risk in the stock market. It means risk when I gamble. It means risk to my immortal soul if I do something my religion forbids. But I think that we should be, I mean, I'm, look, I'm a public health guy or I, I spent a lot of my life in public health and in radiation protection. So I'm, I'm going to limit my stuff to, to human health risk. But the, in, in environmental justice goes beyond that. There are risks too, you know, education, there's, my neighborhood's so polluted, I can't go to school. I mean, that, that's a, that's a health risk that impacts other, other economic risks. But human health, so what, what about Hanford can affect human health? Well, there's safety, okay, for, at least for workers. And as I mentioned before, I think there have been 47 occupational fatalities since 1943 at Hanford, more, 25 of those in 1943, 44 and 45. So more than half. And those are falls, pinch points, explosion, fire, electrocution, drowning, you know, the, the standard hard hat and health, hard hat and handrail kind of safety stuff. Then there's chemicals and there's radiation. So these things do affect human health and there are things that, that we consider. The, the safety, not so much off-site, the, the falls and pinch points and fires and stuff. But then when, when you look at risk, I, I'm inclined to think that we need to be journalists and ask the five W's and an H, you know, who, what, when, where, why and how of risk. And we did that in this IRAP draft, which by the way, DOE, DOE didn't like, so it was never published. But when is the first thing we have to talk about when we talk about risk at Hanford? When does the risk occur? Well, hey, that's, that's a kind of a, an utterly simplistic question. When does the exposure occur that leads to risk? If I get a large dose of radiation today and my body, well, I'm, I'm 73, so it doesn't matter. Suppose I was 20. Suppose I was one of these youngsters like Ryan over here. He might not have had all these kids yet, so he might have heritable ill health that he would be concerned about from radiation chemicals, something that his future children might worry about. So the when of risk is when is the exposure and when is the health effect? And for transgenerational effects like heritable, what we call heritable ill health in radiation protection, transgenerational effects, hey, that could be forever, you know, or it may not even show up for a couple of generations. We, we know that. But, so we can actually talk about committed risk versus transient risk. A committed risk is what we talk about in radiation protection. I got this dose today and that, that if we believe the data from the Japanese bomb survivors, the underground uranium miners, thousands of medical patients and there are loads of radiation epidemiology studies that I've done a lot of work on that in my life. Anyway, so the, the committed risk is what we look at. That's a lifelong thing. There are transient risks and that's like, hey, the thing exploded, I didn't get hurt. It's over. That, that risk is pretty much terminated. So we, we talk about risk present and future. Let's talk about who. There are of course, risks to the public and I think, you know, we're offsite here. We care about the public a lot, but there are also risks to workers. So why on earth would anybody go to work at Hanford? Why would you go out and lean into that punch? Well, the answer is it's a very, very safe place to work. If you look at all cost mortality of Hanford, there's been study after study for decades and all you see is the healthy worker effect. What happens at Hanford? People who are healthy enough to work are healthier than the average population that we compare them to. It's called the healthy worker effect. It's been known in epidemiology for a century. I mean, it's just not news. So then can you tease out something in Hanford? Well, for a decade or so, there was a whiff of excess multiple myeloma, which hadn't been seen before that study and kind of disappeared afterwards. It doesn't, it doesn't emerge clearly in the DOE Health and Mortality Studies. So, but workers can go to Hanford and right now DOE's administrative control level for dose is a, is 10 times higher than the public limit. The public dose limit is one millisievert per year or 100 millirems. In this country, we use that unit. And DOE's administrative control is about 1,000 millirems a year. The, the legal limit is 5,000, but nobody's gotten anywhere near that in DOE in decades, really. That, that's, that's going to be an accident, it's going to happen in an accelerator. So why would a worker accept a 10 times or 50 times higher risk than a member of the public? Paycheck. It's the paycheck. That's why people do dangerous jobs. They get paid and we take pretty darned good care of our workers at Hanford, Hanford. So now we can talk, talk about what kind of health effects for, let's limit it to chemicals and radiation rather than the safety stuff. So there are tissue effects, that could be like a chemical burn or it could be a radiation burn. I don't know of any radiation burns that have occurred in the history of Hanford. Does anyone know? I don't think so. Even, even McCloskey who got radiation doses that were, I mean, he should have been dead 100 times over. He lived, that was the 1976 Hanford, americium accident in which 100 grams of americium 241 blew up in an acid column, blew out the glove box and for McCloskey, Harold McCloskey was face full of glass and acid and americium. And he had like super lethal doses, but he was 64 at the time, lived to be age 76 and did have health effects from that. But we, we haven't had these what are called tissue effects. These are the, the radiation sickness, you know, your hair falls out, you throw up, your skin turns red, nausea, vomiting, maybe you're dying. No, doesn't happen at Hanford. It's never happened at Hanford. Okay, so we can forget that. How about cancer and heritable ill health? All right. Now, now we've got the public's attention. People really care about cancer. People really, really care about heritable ill health or technically what's known as burst effects, technically we call it teratogenesis. And, and this would be, this was seen in the Japanese bomb survivors above 50 REMs, 50 RADS if you want. There were effects like small brains and abnormal development and, and those things. Those are horrible and the public really cares about that. Have we ever had anything like that at Hanford? No, no, nobody. No infant or child has ever gotten doses from Hanford that amounted to a hill of beans on the scale of anything we could possibly detect clinically. So workers, why do we actually put workers at risk? To reduce the risk in the future, to reduce the risk to the public. Okay, worker, you go out there, you get your paycheck, you got a slightly higher chance maybe of getting cancer and you accept that. People accept the risk of being a fireman or a policeman or a, a doctor caring for COVID. So yeah, workers do, and, and so we're trading present risk to workers and our treasure, our $2, $3 billion a year that's not being spent on other public health things or, or education STEM, whatever you want. So, and then, then heritable ill health. It is known in fruit flies that radiation can cause transgenerational effects. It never been seen in people. We haven't irradiated enough human beings to see heritable ill health. I, I know you go to the movies and you see the Incredible Hulk and all of this junk, Spider-Man and all that. It's all wrong. It's all not science. It's just all, you know, make believe stuff, but we haven't had any microcephaly. We haven't had any mental retardation that's radiation risk related from Hanford because there hasn't been any dose. And we, we know that pretty darned well. So those are the health effects. Now, when, when we talked about committed and future, we are averting risk to future generations. Are we, and when we're cleaning up Hanford, are we averting risk to present generations? Somebody show me somebody who's been harmed by Hanford. There's no, there's no doses that, to offsite people from Hanford since the 1949 green run that exceeded any current limits. So we trade current risk to workers to avert future risk to the public. I, I haven't completed the notes that I wanted to say from this report that we wrote. Now it's 25 or more years ago, but all of those concepts happen. And so we invented a concept called gained life expectancy. And the concept was based on lost life expectancy, which is well-understood. I can give you a number of seconds that you are going to lose in your life expectancy by doing a particular act. For example, if you're smoking a cigarette, that's a six. Every minute you spend smoking a cigarette shortens your life by six minutes, right? And you could do that for millirems. You can do that for inhaling benzene and we did 33 different chemicals back then. And I, I guess my, we should be gaining some life expectancy in cleaning up Hanford for future generations. We're not gaining life expectancy for present generations because nobody's drinking contaminated groundwater. The amount of stuff in the Columbia River presently is absolutely negligible. Almost all of the radioactive material in the Columbia River comes through the dam upriver of Hanford, Priest Rapids and, and, or, or dam. And it's uranium. 198 tons of uranium go down the Columbia River every year, but that doesn't come from Hanford. It comes like from Canada and from, you know, the Rockies where there's a lot more uranium in the rocks or it's not, not uranium in the, the salt around here. We are talking here about, you know, in the, in the who, what, when, where, why and how. We are talking about the how. How do we clean up Hanford? And we talk about when and can, can't we, I mean, I heard Rob here, Rob Davis say, can't we just finish this and clean it up? Well, the answer is we could if we didn't want to spend our money on something more important. And how, how would you decide if it was more important? Well, how about comparing risks? How about comparing how much life expectancy we gain by cleaning up Hanford compared with how much life expectancy we lose in our irradiated workers, which by the way, epidemiology can't detect, and we can predict these statistical deaths and so on. Who, what, when, where, why, how? And you know what they don't ask in journalism? How much? How much? How much are we going to spend to avert this risk? Well, you know, you can avert a person REM, that's a REM of radiation dose to one person. It used to be we spent $1,000 to avoid a person REM and then, and then 10, 2,000 and then, well, when we did a study for DOE EH back in 1999, and that's published as a PNA report, Hanford was spending $50,000 to avoid a person REM. Well, you know, you, $50,000 to avoid a person REM at 0.05%, that's 2,000 times 50,000, that's somewhere around. That's somewhere around, am I got that right? Yeah. The $10 billion to save a human life is what we spend on radiation protection at Hanford. And we, or, or at least we did in 1999. So we're paying $10 billion to avert, uh, a REM to our population in order to save one statistical human life. All right, so let me go back to $1,000, $50,000 person REM. Well, you can save a person REM from indoor radon, spending a thousand bucks. There are loads of houses in the Spokane area where if, if, if radiation, if lung cancer from radiation was what you cared about, you wouldn't spend that time at Hanford. You'd go to Spokane and you'd go to those counties in Iowa and the Redding Prong in Pennsylvania and, and western, northwestern New Jersey. Those places, there are houses there that are worse than the worst uranium mine. Oh wait, that's natural. That's not DOE, that's not AEC, that's mother nature. No deep pockets to sue, no laws have been violated, eh, who cares? Somebody's house, not mine. I don't live there. Well, my point is, um, if we're going to talk about risk, I think we, we really ought to look not only at human health risk, but when, when we do something that ignores bigger risks. I mean, personally, I'd take Hanford's entire budget and send it to Ukraine this year. That's personal. I lived and worked in Ukraine. I worked at Chernobyl for two years. I have friends who are dead. I have lots of friends who fled. Those are, those are real, present, right now, risks. So I'm not saying we shouldn't clean up Hanford, but, but when we talk about this, let's, let's talk about when and who's getting the risk for, from the cleanup and who's getting the benefit from the cleanup. And if the benefit is a cultural one, okay, then my public health hat and my understanding of finance does not apply. Cultural values are not accessible to m- money. So, um, I, I taught at Washington State University for 20 some odd years, introduction to radiological science. And I show a slide about, uh, I have a series of slides on radioactive contamination. And one of them is the value of contamination. And so if you're a licensee, let's say I'm the licensee at Energy Northwest. And my worry about radioactive contamination that I released to the Columbia River, I want to keep it below the limit that keeps me out of trouble with the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, the state, people who look at water quality. And as long as I'm below that limit, and I've also applied to Lara, as, as Steve mentioned, that's as low as reasonably achievable. But if I'm below that limit, I'm good. If I'm a Native American person, and I've been told this by Native American people, I do not speak for them, but I've been told this. The amount of radioactivity you care about in the Columbia River is not that last drop that puts you over the regulatory limit. It's the first drop. The first drop of radioactive material that goes in to the Columbia River. It is no longer pristine, it's contaminated. Now there's a snarl word for you, contaminate. From a public health point of view, that's not important. From a cultural point of view, that's, that's, that's above my pay grade. It's beyond my expertise and that's very important. Uh, but that idea of, I mean, forgive me, we have a big wine industry in Oregon and, and Washington. And they say that if you add, um, a drop of wine to a barrel of sewage, you get a barrel of sewage. And if you add a drop of sewage to a barrel of wine, you get a barrel of sewage. And that allows you to understand that first drop, that first atom of plutonium that got into the Columbia River and why people can object to that. I understand that. I can respect that that's a cultural value. But I don't want to spend one penny of my tax dollars that isn't for public health. So I will, I will look up that 1995 document that we worked so hard on about gaining life expectancy from cleaning up Hanford and losing life expectancy for workers. I will finish by saying, I do not know what the risk today is to human health and safety offsite Hanford. There are no radiation doses that are significant. There, nobody is breaking drinking water standards in water that we set. So the present risk to the public? What is that? Somebody tell me. I can understand the future risk if we had a tank breach and it all runs into the river. That's a bad deal. Or it gets into groundwater and it comes up in my well. But anyway, so thank you for my, listening to my ranting and raving. And this comes to environmental justice because environmental justice costs money. Cleaning up Hanford costs money. And there are many other things that cost money. We got to figure out how we want to spend them. So I can, I can tell you the numbers about public health risks as agreed on by international experts. I cannot tell anybody how to spend their money or what's more important. But I can tell you about risk. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. I sort of lobbied for him to give this little talk because we are supposed to be informed. And informed doesn't mean somebody's perception of risk. It means an understanding of what's real. And our ability to be informed depends on us being able to listen to different points of view. And we've heard a lot of points of view that describe Hanford as a risk pit. And I've been at Hanford for at least 40 years. And I can tell you that it ain't near, anywhere near as risky as it was when I first drove onsite. And if you ever want to hear my horror stories, the first day I was onsite, I'd be glad to share it, but I'm not going to take your time up right now. But I do want to thank Dan for that conversation because that's a conversation this board hasn't heard very often. And so thank you for that.
We have a couple of people in queue. And we also have public comments slated for this meeting, um, something we try to do, um, at all of our meetings. Shannon Cram, are you still with us?
Yeah, um, thank you. So one of the things I just wanted to really highlight is that like, what we, what we're talking about when we're talking about environmental justice is we're talking about addressing a power inequity in society by really thinking about how things like risk are unevenly experienced. Um, and so there isn't one risk. There is risk in the context of society that has inequities. And so I really, um, I really want us to remember that that sort of the framing that we're operating within when we're talking about environmental justice, trying to address structural inequalities in the social landscape. And since we're trying to achieve a cleanup that will be, you know, make for a socially just future, we need to really address the social inequities that are built in to the social landscape that we are, are part of, right? So that's the point of environmental justice. That's where that policy comes from. And I really want us to embrace that as a board. And I love Jeff's suggestion of, um, you know, looking again at the board values. I actually pulled them up, um, just now to see kind of like where I think they might fit. And I, I would actually love for us to make a bullet, um, its own, its own bullet um, in our Hanford Board Values, um, our, our Hanford Advisory Board Values. Um, it would actually really slot in pretty easily to use EPAs or ecologies. They're basically really similar definition of environmental justice, which again is the fair treatment and meaningful involvement of all people, regardless of race, color, national origin, or income, with respect to the development, implementation, and enforcement of environmental laws, regulations, and policies. I would really love for the HAB to, um, have some sort of environmental justice statement in explicitly in our mission and values. And also to, um, make sure that we're explicit that we acknowledge and recognize that risk is unevenly borne and we want to clean up that, that addresses that, that social, social inequity. Um, so I'm excited for, maybe the PIC would be a good place to take this up, but I'm excited for that, um, conversation to be like more grounded and, and to be a part of just our basic values as a board. Uh, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. David, thank you for your patience.
Yeah, no problem. Um, I guess a couple of thoughts or comments. Um, I guess first at a more higher level, sort of philosophical, like we heard from Dan. Um, first, I also appreciated his comments. And, um, I think there's a lot of value in, as we talk amongst the HAB or about Hanford cleanup in general, that scientific based risk informed decision making that really is looking at the, what the true risks are and what, and what aren't. And, and again, there's perceptions and there's real risks and they're both important. But, uh, when you're trying to make sometimes challenging decisions with limited budgets or resources or other things, um, having that risk informed approach really seems to me to make a lot of sense. Um, and so I would suggest that again, that, that the HAB and, and others, you know, really kind of, uh, that might be a topic for some future conversations. Um, but specifically about environmental justice, um, although there may not be any risks tomorrow from the Hanford site, it seems to me at a very fundamental level that when we're thinking about injust- environmental justice at Hanford or as it relates to Hanford, perhaps one of the most important things we could do um, in the next 20 or 30 years is to successfully clean it up, clean it up as quickly as possible and eliminate those risks where they exist. Whether it's things like the 30296 waste site underneath the 324 building, the West of canisters, um, the, the 56 million gallons of, of tank waste. Um, you know, we've all been around long enough, or many of us have been around long enough to remember the, the Purex tunnel collapse and the, uh, some of the other, the, the PFP, uh, plutonium issues a few years ago. And those do have, if nothing else, they do have a perception. They create a perception issue for our community, um, for the agriculture community around here uh, and for many others. And so the sooner, in my opinion, the sooner that we can really permanently eliminate some of these risks, the, I think that'll be doing environmental justice work. Again, the opposite, if we do have what you might consider to be a really bad day at the Hanford site, then you're really dealing with some real environmental justice, uh, concerns there. So, uh, I, I think that at that level, um, you know, might be a, a focus area. Uh, but more specifically, um, kind of when we're talking about underrepresented groups and, um, some of the, where there might be some opportunities. Uh, I had a nice conversation with Ginger during the break and, and one of the things that came up was, um, where there might be opportunities to do, to implement some like retention programs at the Hanford site, especially for underrepresented communities. Um, I think there's, you know, there's a challenge sometimes with, um, especially if you're a 25 year old from some other part of the country that you come to the tri cities, come to the Hanford site and may not really feel comfortable. This is new, might be a different, um, you know, ethnic makeup than, than what you're, or maybe even from a reservation a couple hours away. And so maybe some intentional retention programs could be something that might be worth looking at. And then, uh, I don't think I'd be properly wearing my, my TRIDAC Economic Development hat, but I also didn't talk about, you know, small businesses and, uh, um, you know, doing more to both create opportunities for underrepresented small businesses, okay pathways for maybe tribal businesses, uh, to do work at the Hanford site. And then, um, you know, I think one of the things that we're all aware of in the, in the tri city area at least is the economic impact, uh, mostly positive, but there are some negatives, but mostly positive from the Hanford site. Um, that one day if we're successful, that economic impact will go away, the benefits. Um, and so continuing to work on economic development more broadly to the region to continue to support the, the quality of life and, and the quality of living that a lot of us appreciate here today.
Thank you, David. Chris Sutton, you put something in chat and, and one of the challenges is not everybody can see the chat. So would you please read what you put in there so folks can, um, hear it as well as see it?
Okay. Um, one of the documents that I just uploaded into Teams is a history of environmental justice at DOE. And because we've been talking about risk, I thought that the quote that I put in chat was kind of interesting. And the quote goes like this. Many environmental justice issues involve around issues of environmental risk. Agencies with ample experience and knowledge of their activities will view risk differently from lay citizens. The real issue is often the perceived risk rather than the real risk. Differences in the perception of risk are escalated where there are outstanding issues or distrust between the agency and the community of group. But I thought it was interesting, the word perception. Real risk versus perceived risk. But people act on their perceptions, whether they're correct or not. And their perceptions and how they act are real to them regardless of whether, of what, regardless of whether what reality is or not. So that might be something we think about, perception versus, versus reality. What's reality and what's reception? Or perception, excuse me.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes, thank you, Ruth. Yeah, and I think before I came to Washington State, I was in DC. And when it was this whole, you know, was kind of really getting pu- getting a big push by Representative Dehalva and forget the representative's name, you know, about environmental justice. But I think like what Chris said, I think sometimes as a person that I think focuses more on like the oral history and the community, the big thing I was taking when I got to Richland is, um, about the, the racial dynamics, right? And how Hanford still, you know, affects that. And I think like we want to, I think, and the big thing I also been hearing from the community is like how technical some of these issues and the membership and that sometimes like that diversity on the board and everything. But at the end, you know, I think, um, you know, instead of me going to law school, I did a, a degree in conflict analysis at the end. It's, I remember at Antioch, it said, started off with, apply the common sense factor. If it, you know, if it's not, you know, it's looking like two, two that doesn't make any common sense that, and I think the big thing with the board is like, I think what is mentioned is, what's the perception, like Chris just mentioned, what's the perception to that community, right? How, and environmental justice to me like in the same, especially with the policy level where we're trying to implement is, I think with the capacity with the Hanford board is like, I think what has been mentioned, what is our values really? And what are we really meant to do? Are we really, I mean, there's no really budget. What's the real, the accountability of the federal agencies, the state agencies? At the end, you know, who's really, yeah, I don't know if we're going to just look at the data and, and everything. What's the purpose then of accountability in the cleanup? Because yeah, you know, I think was it, I think I've seen the governor post about, you know, how long ago the tri city agreement was signed. But you know, that I guess that apparently that the cleanup was already supposed to happen. But it's like, who's perception right? And even, and if you boil it down, who's in charge of doing the communication about what was happening and everything, right? So at the end, what's our role really as the board? If, you know, if we're not supposed to do the outreach, the education? And when it comes to environmental justice, how are communities expect to perceive it, right? You can talk about all the data you want, but at the end, if you can't even show the common sense approach to, to tell a person how it's going to affect their community and the reason it, they should care about it, what's the point? You know, and what are we doing here? Yeah, there's money. You want to send money to Ukraine everywhere. Man, how about spending some money in your own community? You know? I mean, it's not rocket science, people, and it's not nuclear science. How about actually talking to people? And I think, you know, like Bob Suayama said the other, talk to us. It's not happening. You want to talk data, you want to talk science, you want to talk this? Just talk to people and tell them what the heck really is going on. It's not that hard. And also hold that, that's why political leaders are held accountable and look at what's going on with our democracy. Because people just don't even want to talk to each other and just think that laws don't apply to them. What the, the laws now apply to federal agencies involved in all this process? Come on, geez.
Thank you. Really, this has been very interesting, listening to everybody. One of the words that I have not heard in conjunction with environmental justice or risk or anything or decisions having to do with those is or decisions having to do with those is sustainability. We're in the place where we are now because there were decisions made because they needed to be made in that short period of time, but there really wasn't much thought to the sustainability of any, anything that might happen as a result of that. So for me, that's a word that we as a board need to think about when we're talking about issues having to do with environmental justice. And for me, environmental justice is, everybody is, everybody is equal. Everybody, but that isn't the case. There are some cultural things on the Hanford site that are meaningful to tribes that really don't have much to do with risk, but it is something that they need access to and, and I get that. We've always been very circumspect. Uh, we, none of us speak for the tribes. There's a, a specific government-to-government relationship and we absolutely honor that and we're really glad that they participate on the board. But it's something that, that, that we need to talk about sustainability. And I was really reminded of that word with David's conversation, 'cause he talked about encouraging small business and that sort of thing, for a short-time contract on the Hanford site. But where's the sustainability for that little company? So it's something that as we contemplate and have more conversations about this, I think that, that thought, that word needs to be part of the conversation. Thank you.
I have Chris and Rob in queue and the agenda has public comment at three thirty. So, Chris, um, you're up and then Rob, I may have to go to public comment before I go to you. Chris?
Yes. I think there's a lesson to learn here that for all of us on the HAB that goes beyond, um, environmental risk. I just, I just clicked on environmental risk on the internet yesterday to kind of learn a little bit about it. And one of the things that I was surprised to learn is that Bill Clinton signed an executive order in nineteen ninety-four that mandated that all departments in the federal government, uh, implement environmental risk in nineteen ninety-four. Yet despite the fact that I've been in, in different DOE sites cleaning them up for almost thirty years, this recent discussion is the first I've heard of environmental risk, despite the fact that it's been around since nineteen ninety-four. And DOE implemented it in its first strategic plan, uh, environmental risk strategic plan in nineteen ninety-five. So I think the lesson to learn is, is you keep, you have to keep coming back to things like this because you forget about them, new people aren't aware of them, um, the discussion on risk, on land use, environmental justice, and a number of other things that we've discussed in the HAB. We can't just discuss them once and leave them. I think we have to keep coming back to them again and again and again, uh, in order, in order for everybody to be on, on, on the same page, especially for going out outreach in communities. We have to keep addressing these things, especially when we're looking at a fifty-year cleanup coming ahead. And like I said, environmental risk was signed into law in executive order nineteen ninety-four and required for all departments in the federal government. Yet I bet you, like myself, there's a number of us here that this is new to them. So the same thing would apply to end states, to land use, to risk, to any, a number of things that we've discussed here in the HAB. That's my comment.
All right. So I want to take a breath at this point. Um, we have public comment listed on the agenda. We have thirty-six people logged into Teams, so the meeting is bigger than it looks in the room. Is there anybody who wishes to make public comment at this time, either in the room or logged into Teams or on the phone? Anyone?
Hello?
Hello?
Hello. My name's Anthony Smith. Uh, I work for the Nessprish Tribe, also a tribal member. Um, I've been listening to the conversation here and, uh, have a few comments, I guess.
Yes. Can you restate your name, please?
Anthony Smith.
Anthony Smith. Welcome. What's on your mind?
Well, you know, through the discussions, um, in regard to environmental justice and we've heard a lot of discussion about the, the, what everybody's perception of it. But, you know, getting down to it, you know, it, it really is about funding. And, you know, there's, there's, if there's no funding, then there's, it's not gonna go anywhere. There's this huge component about, this is, this is probably a huge component that environmental justice really centers around because if a group or organization or, uh, set of people don't have the capacity to, uh, build up their own interpretation or perception of what's going on and then sitting in a meeting or being asked questions by somebody that's more informed, that puts them at a disadvantage. You know, and I, and I look at that and, and, you know, that you heard earlier that, um, there was a nineteen ninety-four, there was an executive order, one twenty-eight ninety-eight, uh, executive order in regard to environmental justice. What has been done since then? When we look at top, when we look at, you know, the, the ideas behind, um, terminologies that have been thrown around, uh, the ideas of meaningful or consultation or communication, clean, what does clean mean to you? Or equity? These things shouldn't be looked at as, as a means of a conversation or only one-sided. I mean, speaking from a tribe's perspective, we all know about how, you know, you say we're gonna have consultation, but at the, when we get there, we get to the, we, we, we inform you of our perspective of what we want and how we wanna move forward. But in the end, that decision is not being made with us. And that's what's the disadvantage when you talk again about environmental justice. Nessprish Tribe has its own end state policy. The idea of clean for the Nessprish Tribe is uncontaminated, unrestricted use of the land. We know full well since nineteen eighty-four, when we first got recognized under the Nuclear Waste Policy Act, that when they were looking at Hanford as a repository for storage, they never really truly walked away from that. Because that issue came up again when Nevada closed its doors. And currently, those still, those issues are still at hand because, guess what, people? Hanford is, is hosting nuclear submarine reactors on the site. Interim decisions are being made that are turning out to be long-term. And the idea behind long-term, if you wanna really talk about that, we have a history, ten thousand years of our existence in this land, and we'll be here just as long. That outlasts the establishment of the United States government two hundred and fifty years ago. If anyone has anything to think about as long-term and being at a disadvantage, it's us because we're gonna be the ones still here. You all can move out, go to a different state, different country. This is our home. This has always been our home. And so when we talk about risk, it's a one-sided conversation. Because the Department of Energy, even EPA, when, it wasn't more than a year ago that I talked to, um, Carlton Water, Water, uh, what is his name? Let me see. Waterhouse. Yeah, talked to Carlton Waterhouse. We had the same conversation. He was asking, well, how come the tribes aren't really pushing the issues? Because nobody's listening. We've been saying the same message for a long time. And all we get is the runaround. And this is another coming of it. Like I said, this conversation happened ninety-four, so that was thirty years practically. You guys brought in risk-based end states, DOE. So we're still having the same conversation. But that understanding, that idea of meaningful type of conversations is not there. And regardless of what you, you, you know, the, what Dan said earlier, there's no risk out there. I don't believe that. Until they can prove, with the burden of proof, say that, and prove that that site is uncontaminated for the use that we wanna utilize it for, we'll assume that that site is contaminated. There again is an environmental justice issue because we have somebody that's working for the Department of Energy or had worked for the Department of Energy or within the nuclear science and has the, the, the credibility, so to speak, in some regard in his own right. But he's asking us to trust them for whatever he has to say. We have a long history of people saying that to us as tribes. None of it's been true. So what's different? What, so, yeah, and then what, what's the action? So we wanna, you know, everybody's talking the same conversation that we've heard thirty years ago. So what is the action? What are we, what are you gonna move forward to do that proves us different? And if you don't have any funding behind it, then this conversation is pretty much mutant. We'll see you again in another thirty years. That's my con, that's my comment.
Thank you. Rose, I see your hand up. Um, you're welcome to make public comment and if you would introduce yourself as well.
Thank you. Um, my name is Rose Berry. I'm with Yakima Nation. And, um, Tony took a lot of what I actually had in my notes to say. Very, very, as usual, Tony, well-stated. Um, I am gonna kind of, I am gonna make one comment, though. Unless you, all of you, know and understand the traditions and the culture of native tribes, you cannot possibly understand the risk to the, to, to the people. It, it's just impossible for you to do so, to understand the resources and how the resources are utilized, the value of the resources and the culture. You can't possibly understand the risk. Um, so the question really is, one single question. Are tribal people disproportionately adversely affected by what is going on at Hanford and the cleanup levels? And I think Tony answered that question. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Is there anyone else who'd like to make public comment? From the phone, from Teams, in the room? Anyone? Rob, I wanna thank you for-
Hi, can you hear me?
Oh, go, yes. If you'd introduce yourself, please.
Yes, sorry. Um, I, this is Lorraine Contreras and I'm also with Yakima Nation, um, ERWM program. And I, you know, was trying to get logged in. Um, it, the notice, meeting notice went to my spam. So, um, I'm on the call. Um, I wasn't able to get onto the Teams today. But my comment is, you know, again, you know, it has been reflected and, and since I've joined, um, the ERWM program in, in two thousand eighteen, um, you know, it, it does get very disheartening and, and it is a big concern for, you know, the, um, for the Yakima Nation and, and the other affected tribes that, you know, have to, you know, constantly coordinate and, and try to rationalize, you know, our, our understanding of, you know, the cleanup process and, and what needs to be done to heal the land. And, you know, and it is frustrating because, you know, like was, like what was stated, if you don't understand, you know, the risks and the deep, you know, heart-rooted meaning of, you know, those cultural areas and the, the religious areas and, you know, the history of our people there, you know, and, and what it means going forward, um, you know, it's, it is very scary because of the fact that, you know, um, you know, our younger generation, we're just starting to implement, um, you know, processes within our program to, you know, help them understand, you know, the issues at Hanford. And, you know, you'd be amazed as, you know, uh, a lot of individuals throughout the community, you know, yes, we know Hanford is there and we know, you know, you get reports about, you know, good things going on and, you know, even recently the GAO recommendation and, oh, yeah, they're doing, you know, doing a great job. And, you know, if we do this, then, you know, you're gonna save money. But, you know, what's, what is, um, not fair and just to the tribes is the fact that, you know, that the land has been damaged. And, you know, we know it's gonna be millions of years, you know, way beyond our time on this earth that, you know, we're gonna have, um, you know, the effects and, and the fact that we can't even go out there and, and freely use the land and, and cultivate like we used to. I mean, you know, tribes used to meet there, you know, to trade. And it was, you know, one of the first places that we met, um, you know, that our people met, you know, because it was, uh, you know, the, just because of the, the fact that it was a warmer climate there, you know. And so that was one of the first places that people gathered. And, you know, if you don't understand that and you don't know the history of it and how important it is for, you know, me, you know, even for my, my children, my grandchildren. And, you know, you always hear that the younger generations are our future. If they don't understand it either, you know, it's, it's gonna be lost. And, you know, and, you know, like the gentleman said, you know, thirty years later, we're still having this discussion. And, you know, it, we do need to, you know, um, take care of the, the process of, you know, having, you know, everybody in, in these positions that have the, the power, you know, basically to, you know, um, move things along there at Hanford and to, you know, take the measures that are proper and, you know, a higher standard than just cutting corners, you know, to, you know, try to, you know, grout and leave things in place. That's not healing it. That's not taking care of the problem. And, you know, if it wasn't for, you know, Atway Russell Jim stepping forward, you know, back in the eighties and starting to question, you know, it's like, well, we can't use our homeland, but, you know, what's going on here? You know, and then, um, you know, just meetings that I've, I've attended personally, you know, where, where being told, oh, you know, yeah, there's contamination there, but we can't identify all of it to you. You know, that, to me, it's like, you know, there was, there was a lot of things that went by the wayside and people, you know, back then, nobody was being held accountable. And so, you know, even now going forward, you know, you try to get answers and even asking, you know, up through the chain of command in DOE, you know, well, who's handling this? Who's taking care of that? And, you know, one of the last comments that I received was, you know, a short incurred answer, you know, and being told that, you know, I'm just gonna leave it there. So it's like, you know, that's not fair. That's not just when, you know, as a, a program administrator, you know, for the Yakima Nation, I'm asking these questions and I wanna know who the players are. And, you know, we're always being told, yeah, you know, we wanna be transparent. We wanna, you know, we wanna help you and, you know, let's do this. But, yeah, without adequate funding, you know, even our program budgets have been, you know, scaled back. Yet, you know, you hear all the great things that the contractors are out there doing and all the funds that they're getting. And, um, you know, it's like, to me, that's, that's not fair and just because the tribes, you know, they should be, you know, uh, able to fully participate in, in all of these activities. And when the funding's not there, that allows you to do that, you know, that is unjust and, you know, and it is a big concern. So, um, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other public comments that people would like to share with the group? Rob, you have been incredibly patient. I warned you we were gonna break for public comment.
No, it's, it's really hard to follow any of that. I mean, to come after all of that. I follow it totally. I understand and we're very supportive. So, um, the one thing I did wanna um, mention is that in Dan's discussion about risk and risk to the worker that, um, I am really grateful that, um, you know, I've worked at nuclear facilities all my life. Um, IANEL, Hanford, Nevada Test Site. I've, I've been to private hot cells and laboratories and each and every place, the safety programs involved, the education going into the radioactive worker, the person handling physio materials and things of that sort, is second to none. And that's the reason why we don't have the accidents with the humans and you don't have these, these huge exposures and, and, and so yes, that risk is very low. The risk that I think that is important to me is the risk of, now, you know, being that I'm an engineer and I don't wanna say this, but engineering failures. Okay, we got tanks out there leaking right now. That is a risk that we're not anticipating or we're not calculating into the big picture. And, and to have DOE say, okay, we're just, it's, it's no greater than background, everything else is contaminated out there. We're gonna go ahead and let it leak and catch up with our other programs. We, we don't know how to valu- evaluate that risk. We know it's gonna be one heck of a lot of money if we decide to ever go after it. But, um, the, the point is, is that we need terms of risk, not necessarily that we can, and I think Dan also mentioned, past injustice, present and future, and just use the word risk there, past risk, future risk and present risk. Is that our future risk is where I think our environmental justice has got to really focus on. And, um, and so anyway, I, I just, um, I had written a bunch of stuff about, um, what I felt the injustices that I picked here, I'll give those to you, um, when we finish here. But, um, you know, I think that we need to really think about the big picture and look at stuff that's gonna happen because it's not necessarily going to plan. Those tanks are not leak-type and we are leaking material into the earth and that we'll never go after. And so that is an injustice that we can't go after it. That's about what I wanted to say, is that I'm really grateful all of our HPs and all of our staff and every hot cell I've worked at and glove box and things like that. Um, you know, follow the rules. I'm healthy. I don't think I got any long-term damage from all the other stuff that I did. But, uh, and, and I think that's a good thing about DOE being extra safe and, and DOE taking and, and dropping those exposure levels down to the minimum. And in the commercial nuclear industry, it was like we were looking at five thousand dollars per rim exposure, you know, and had to calculate all that out before we worked a pump or something. But, uh, but, but anyway, I think that the big point is, is that it's the future risk that I am really concerned about. And, and I, I hope that we have answers of some, answers to deal with it. Thank you.
Well, I wanna, I wanna thank everybody for, this conversation has been very insightful to me. And I particularly appreciate tribal folks speaking clearly as to the values that we need to think about. There's a lot of different variations of risk and justice and injustice. And the site is a challenge and will be a challenge for the rest of my short lifetime. And I plan to hand it over to my great-grandchildren with, in mind that it's a little better than it was when I started, but they still got work to do. And we all still have work to do. And I really, I really wanna thank the DOE and facilitation team for setting this room up in a way that actually looks familiar from some part of my history that, uh, except for the fact there's a lot of empty chairs. So I'd like to encourage, even though we don't always appreciate the way the agenda was developed, I'd like to encourage people to attend these meetings in person so we can look into your eyes and really communicate. Uh, I appreciate the folks that have tried to, tried to participate remotely. Uh, but I can tell you from a cost-benefit perspective, I wouldn't spend the money setting this room up this way again if people don't start showing up. But then that's just my economy. Uh, anyway, I'd, I'd like to, unless there's anything we need to talk about, I'd like to just thank everybody for participating today and giving us some really good food for thought. And I think that's a big part of it is to think about these things in a broader context and know that we all have an obligation that's not gonna end when our participation on the HAB ends. You know, we have an obligation, as long as we're able to think about things, to find ways to participate. And so thank you all very mu- End of meeting.
He's the chair.
For now.